Good afternoon, the time is now 12:52 and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of October 8, 2019 is called to order. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
There are, and before they speak, I will review the rules for public comment. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board. If you have handouts, please pass them to the person closest to you at the table. It's the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. However, you may be contacted after the board meeting. The public participation guidelines state that forms must be submitted prior to the beginning of the public comment portion of the meeting. Do I have all the green forms? Thank you. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people and disrespecting anyone by name will be gavelled down and asked to cease. We will be strictly following the time limits so that everyone has the opportunity to speak, and I will monitor it on my phone with the three-minute timer. And I'll tell you who the first speaker is and then the next person who's on deck. So our first speaker is Alberto Tenneque, and the second speaker is Keith Young. And I apologize if I mispronounce your name, and I would love it if you would correct me when you come to the table. So Mr. Tenneque, when you're ready, we're ready.
Good evening, or good day. My name is Alberto Tenneque, and I'm a parent that formed an anti-bullying group. I almost lost my daughter two years ago due to bullying. I know the board what the process is, and I know that your hands are tied, but we want the board to be aware that, you know, the problem is big. We're losing kids, you know, to suicide, we're losing kids that are self-harming themselves, and, you know, we see so much about the state wanting to be in the top 10% of education, but you're leaving behind 25, 30% of the kids that are being bullied. You know, we saw earlier all these kids in here that are happy and that these kids that are being bullied want to be happy too, but they're afraid to go to school, a lot of them. You know, they wake up, "My stomach hurts," or some problem that they'll come up just to avoid going to school. And my group is fighting, you know, trying to get legislators to change the laws, you know, because we believe there needs to be mandates in the schools. Math law went into effect in 2012. Schools had to 2015 to get their stuff in order. It's 2019, and they're still failing. You know, I've had even false IEP reports. You know, when we go to complain, okay, the process is there, and it ends up down to the school district board, but it's almost, to me, it's almost like taking Charles Manson and taking his followers and say, "Here, you try the man." Because we have no representation when it comes down that it's first to the principal and then to the superintendent, then to the school board, when to me it seems like it's all hand-in-hand. You know, and things need to change because we're losing kids. You know, Michael Martin that just passed, you know, committed suicide seven, eight months ago. You know, since I started my group, there's been four Michigan kids that have committed suicide. That's way too many. You know, as I speak to you now, I assure you, there's kids out there that are contemplating committing suicide. There's kids out there right now at this moment that are probably self-harming themselves, that are home because they're afraid to go to school. You know, bullying isn't a kid's problem, it's an adult problem. It's adults not doing the right thing and doing the right reporting. And that's where it needs to be stopped. Adults need to be accountable for what they're supposed to do. You know, as parents, we're responsible to send our kids to school and to be there, but yet the schools are responsible to keep our kids safe. All of our kids. You know, that includes the 25% that are being bullied. You know, I just don't see the state getting to that 10%. The state's always wanting money, money, you know, for spending on the students, and I agree with that, but there needs to be a change. You know, we need to put something in place where these kids quit getting hurt, where they have the same opportunity like these kids that were in here earlier to be happy and smiling too, instead of being quiet. I watch some of these kids here, and not all of them participated. And it makes me wonder in my mind what's going on with them. Why are they not participating?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Keith Young, followed by David Lewis.
Good afternoon. My name's Mr. Keith Young. I am the founder of Ecotec Lab. It's a research laboratory network for young inventors around the country. I own labs in Orlando, Baltimore, St. Louis, and Detroit. During the earlier session, I heard a lot about proficiency, literacy, equity, so on and so forth. What I wanted to do was just let the board know that I'd like you guys, if you could, you know, come down to our lab in Detroit. They have two labs there. One's for super lightweight metals design. We're doing some work with the Department of Defense. And then we have some other work that's going on. I think the, you know, the end game is, our lab's been in Detroit for 13 years, and the folks over at Bayer Corporation wrote a story on us last month and ranked us as the number one laboratory in the country for young scientists. I think people in Michigan need to know that, because it makes really no sense that folks in Philadelphia and LA and Chicago write stories about our lab in Detroit, and no one in our part of the world really knows that. So I'd like to thank Ms. Michelle for visiting our lab. She kicked in the door, and she said, "Hey, what's going on here?" I said, "Man, close the door before somebody else knows." But we have 13 startup companies in our laboratory, which has provided opportunities for scholarships, internships, and so on and so forth. Our work is primarily with the United Nations, and for that, our kids get the social studies as well as the reading and the writing and the fieldwork. So again, I'd like you to share the information with folks in your district, and as a group, I'd be more than happy to host you at our lab to just kick the tires and see if it fits for the culture of what you're trying to develop here in the state of Michigan. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
All right, Mike, thanks.
Our next speaker is David Lewis, followed by John Felsky. And Mr. Lewis, if you would introduce the people with you.
I shall. This is George Copeland, who works with our Public School Academy group and our scholarships. And this is Shandra Williams, who is our school improvement specialist. She also works with those students and the Young Educator Society. So I'm the director from Saginaw Valley State University, the School University Partnership Office. We authorize 20 schools, approximately 11,000 students across Michigan. So I want to turn this over first to George Copeland, and then Shandra Williams will speak.
Hello, everyone. I'm excited to be here just to talk about our program. I oversee the Public School Academy Scholar Program, and in this program, it is a four-year renewable scholarship of $6,000. So each of our students have access to $6,000 for four years. In addition to that $6,000 for their academic year, every semester they have access to $1,000 to study abroad, as well as $500 to go on any alternative trips. If our students cannot afford their books, we have something called a lending library. And in this lending library, if a student needs a book, they can go to our library and check it out through our department, and they can have that book for the semester. In addition to that, one of the biggest things is our students, when it comes down to household help, a lot of my students need assistance. And so what we've created in my office is a resource. And so my students know they can get breakfast, lunch, and dinner in my office by the food that we provide, as well as toiletries. If they cannot purchase toiletries, we have those in my office. And it's, our students have a relationship with me, so they don't have to worry about feeling awkward or feeling self-conscious in getting this information and getting these resources, because they know me. We've built a relationship. In addition to that, every first-year student comes in for a transition camp. During that transition camp, they complete a self-efficacy assessment. Once they get on our campus and the semester starts, they meet with school improvement specialists like Mrs. Williams, and we create a personal plan. So if our student says that they need resources in reading, with our school improvement specialists in language arts and mathematics, we work with our students to build and give them those resources that we can help improve. Right now, our retention rate for our program is at 84%. If we're looking at 84%, the majority of our students come from the Detroit area, but we're holding at 84% in our program, and that's really the goal. We want to reduce the barriers and increase opportunities for our students. And by having this scholarship, it's really taking that financial burden from them so they can succeed at SVSU.
Hello, my name is Shandra Williams, and I have the pleasure of introducing you to the YES program. YES stands for Young Educator Society of Michigan. YES is a combination between universities and local school districts who come together to recruit underrepresented populations into the field of teaching. We want to bring back the power and passion to teaching, and we want to catch students young, grade seven through 12, by starting clubs or charters in middle schools and high schools that pipeline to some universities. So this isn't just SVSU, this is the University of Michigan and other universities. Thank you for your time. Please refer to your pamphlet.
Keep going, you're a group, so you get a little extra time.
Oh, okay.
We get more time. Thank you.
All right, so Saginaw Valley State University, the University of Michigan, Michigan State University, Grand Valley State University, Wayne State University, and Western Michigan University were all the partners. For last year, we had over 400 students registered throughout the state of Michigan, and we just look forward to starting those clubs and bringing back the passion of education by allowing students to see what it means to be an educator, and not just what they hear, quote-unquote, "on the street," or what maybe they've experienced, but let them see the power and the passion. It's a real profession, and it's one of the best professions out, and we want to reclaim that for our students.
Should you be interested in contacting us for deeper questions or want to know more about our programs, we've handed those out to you. Basically, the university wants to support this world of students. It's kind of a K-16 model. Want to help them through scholarship, and we want to help build that recognition or importance of filling those teacher voids by going back to secondary level and getting them engaged and excited about being a teacher or student. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and to share us.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Felsky, and he will be followed by James J. Beasley Jr.
Good afternoon, Board of Education. Thank you, and welcome to Saginaw, where I started my teaching career in 1984 with the Saginaw Public Schools. And just like to say, it's nice to be back home, and also like to thank Kathy Stewart and the ISD for all their assistance in not only providing this, but as I talk about an organization that I represent, we now have a charter high school here in Saginaw. So my name's John Felsky. I'm the CEO of Covenant Academies Foundation. We have high schools in Muskegon, Kalamazoo, and also here in Saginaw. We opened our school here in Saginaw in November of last year. So we're just under a year old, and I just wanted to do a quick overview of who we are and what we do, but we also, I'd also like to share with the board that congratulations on your hiring of Dr. Rice. We were peers a part of middle cities for a number of years, and congratulations, and we've been well-represented as an organization with people at the leadership position before, and again, welcome you to your new position. And as we talked earlier, I hope you are able to still connect with kids and not always all adults.
Amen.
Because I know that's not what we always got in this business. So I would just like to read a real quick, brief overview of who we are and what we represent, and then I'll be done, and I'd like to thank you in advance for your time. Saginaw Covenant Academy is a nonprofit charter high school authorized by Grand Valley State University, enrolling students ages 16 to 22. Saginaw Covenant Academy provides dropouts, homeless, and at-risk youth with the opportunity to earn a traditional Michigan merit high school graduation diploma, improve their life skills, and continue on to higher education, post-secondary training, or the workforce. Saginaw Covenant Academy offers year-round enrollment, a 220 instructional day calendar, breakfast and lunch daily, and onsite childcare. By providing a safe, structured, self-paced learning environment, which allows our students to work independently with highly qualified teachers to develop the knowledge and skills needed in life, aided with a compassionate and caring staff who serve as parents first, the school serves the mission of preventing poverty, underachievement, and homelessness while offering hope, encouragement, and unconditional love and absolute respect to our most invulnerable youth. That's what our organization's about. We thank the Board of Education for their time, and again, all the people who have supported us throughout three different organizations and three ISDs in the state of Michigan, and I thank you for your work, because as we all know, education is a very challenging topic anytime, and of course, as of this point in time, it always is. So thank you for your time, Dr. Rice. Best of luck in your new endeavors.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is James J. Beasley Jr., followed by James Hare.
Yeah, good afternoon to this honorable board. My name is James Jeremiah Beasley Jr. I'm a native Detroiter, and I'm here to speak on approaches to closing the achievement in the poverty gap. We'd like to say the innovation looks different by design. And so Dr. Rice and the honorable school board members, we thank you for your attendance here. What you have before you in these orange folders are, is a letter that I'm going to be reading to you. On one side, and on the other side, there is detailed analysis of all the partnership school districts that you have going there. That analysis will show you the growth that can be achieved with a partnership of Applied Sigma. Now, that's just a summary. You're going to have forwarded to you an electronic copy of that email, and what you see on the electronic copy, if you click on each one of those school districts, you'll see a detailed graphic approach in terms of what we've computed in terms of the potential that can be achieved. Now, the attached document addresses four education issues in Michigan schools. It addresses third-grade reading challenge, the compliance of the Every Student Succeeds Act, the bottom 5% analysis of partnership districts, and in support of your top 10 and 10-year strategy. Now, our 20-year research project intensifies and identifies root academic problems in Michigan schools and provides a growth-based toolset to solve these problems and overcome the poverty gap. Now, Dr. Rice, we were encouraged to read about your plan to fine-tune the Michigan Top 10 and 10 with quantifiable achievable metrics, and we can provide you support in that area. The Two Sigma Research Group in Michigan has replicated the scientific educational outcomes of Dr. Benjamin Bloom of combining mastery learning and one-on-one tutoring to generate a Two Sigma, or Two Standard Deviation Growth outcomes in the poorest performance scholars. We've researched success outcomes in many school districts in Michigan and documented zero percentile priority schools moving to reward status in one academic year. Now, we'd like to share with you a minimum growth policy centered on research and evidence-based methods to achieve third-grade reading proficiency, but this plan leverages the new resources provided in every Student Succeeds Act with public-private partnership and social impact bonding. We've established advanced analytics to identify the elements and characteristics of success with predictive metrics, and we have a collective goal of providing a system that consistently produces proficient or advanced scholars, and will reduce the cost per proficient scholar, which is astronomical in poor-performing school districts. Now, there's a real role for applied science in education, and that will transform this. And for the other half, three minutes, we're going to have Mr. Hare speak upon that as we're speaking as a group.
Continue, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. Congratulations, Dr. Rice.
Thank you.
And it's great to see a successful Michigan educator lead the state. You face some tremendous challenges. Our research has shown us that we believe the core problem in any low-performing school district is reading and literacy. And our research shows that until you solve that problem, you really won't make any progress. But we also went around the country over the last 20 years and found that amazingly, the children aren't the problem, it's the adults in the system. One of the things we found, no matter whether we were in a low-performing school district in the Mississippi Delta where they barely get $7,000 a year, or in Washington DC where they get nearly $25,000 a year, or in New York where they get similar numbers, an amazing phenomenon happens. If you go to a classroom in a low-performing school district, they all look the same. Little resources, under-resourced, poor curriculum, no accountability for the adults. As James mentioned earlier, what we found was that when you take a mastery-based curriculum and a one-to-one teacher, you get amazing results. Two standard deviations is like eight school years. The paper we'll be sending to you where Bloom did his original work. Now, what our research project did, and we are honored to actually have been across the hall from Mr. Young. We worked together, we actually integrate his program as our STEM program. But what we found is that the problem for the last 30 years in Silicon Valley is how do you solve this Bloom-Two Sigma problem, because no one can afford a teacher for every student? Well, we solved it with a pure Michigan solution. And we've proven that we can take a zero percentile Michigan school, zero percentile, 0% proficiency in third-grade reading, and move those students in one school year to 76%. That's right up there with Birmingham, Bloomfield, Novi. And we go a step further. It's not free, but our system is designed to be work within the model of Title I funding. So we're combining a new technology or new business approach included in the ESSA law called Social Impact Bonds. So we're prepared to offer this solution statewide, fully funded, with a guarantee of performance where no money or funds are required until we actually produce the results. We're working with Ben Harper, and we hope they will be our first pilot.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Golab, followed by Ivy Golab.
Can we have Ivy first?
Sure.
Hello, I'm Ivy, and I'm in the fourth grade at Michigan School for the Deaf. I am deaf, and I'm transgendered at MSD. And I also want to be a leader for the LGBTQ+ community. I want to establish something for the LGBTQ+ community with a history class for all over Michigan, all the schools, because we could learn about our history, and that prevents bullying and low self-esteem, and to make people understand our history better.
Our next speaker is Heather Golab, followed by our final speaker, Rosa Morales.
Hello, my name is Heather, and I am a parent of five children. Three of them attend Michigan School for the Deaf, one will be shortly attending there, and one that goes to school here in Saginaw. As you can see, my daughter just had to use an iPad to help communicate, which is a way that deaf children help, it helps them to learn in transition over into English. It's important also at MSD to have a counselor there who understands the PTSD in deaf children and language deprivation. I would ask you also to say no to Senate Bill 509, which is, it's against what we want in Lead K. Hold on one second. Will you tap the table for me, Laura? Go back. Go back to after, language deprivation. So, which is a part of Lead K was talking about language deprivation. So if you could please talk to your senators about Senate Bill 509, which we would like to say no, because that comes from A.G. Bell, and that's not what we want for our deaf children. I also would like to talk about how MSD is viewed as an agency instead of a school. An agency is a business or an organization established to provide services typically involving transitions between two parties. So MSD is not an organization, it's not an agency, it's a school, and a school is how it should be looked at. It's an institution for educational, educational learning. The archaic philosophy of the school being an asylum is something that needs to stop. We're in 2019, we're not in the 1900s anymore. My son has also informed me that this year, sports has stopped at school. We don't longer have volleyball or football, and I feel like the reason that we're losing the kids is because of morale in the school. With all the things that have just happened in the school, it's, you know, it's a cause and effect, and if the school has a bad morale, the teachers have a bad morale, that's impacting these students. And so there's lack of motivation in being involved. So we need more support for our teachers at MSD and have a better morale system there in the school. I would also, you know, would like to say that we in the deaf community, including myself, we want Michigan School for the Deaf to be one of the top 10 and 10 as well. So you see, you know, we're in a good process. It's a slow process, and we're getting there, but please, please, you know, just check in on us here at MSD. Don't forget us. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Rosa Morales.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Saginaw. I'm a Saginaw native. I want to talk to you a little bit about what our students in Saginaw, our parents and guardians in Saginaw, who may not be at this table today or in the audience, but who still are seriously facing educational challenges. That's why you're here, that's why I'm here, and those in the audience, including our cohorts colleague of us, Minnie Rosales in the audience, former Saginaw School Board member, employees from here who have been helping the Hispanic community, of which my comments will be about, Angelica Lozano Garcia, I saw her in the audience. I'm here to talk to you about the Parent-School Partnership, grassroots effort that a coalition of Hispanic organizations here in Saginaw have finally come together. We're often at odds, but we certainly are committed to education for the future of our planet, and this coalition feels that it's time for us to step up, create the tutoring-type programs that have been in operation in the past for Hispanic kids, but because of funding cuts and all sorts of reasons, no longer exist in Saginaw. We are attempting to create, through the Parent-School Partnership, an outreach effort which was launched almost a year ago. We meet monthly, sometimes twice a week, twice a month at Zion Lutheran. Pastor Han is one of our supporters. What we're trying to do, reach out to Hispanic parents, families, blended Hispanic and Black families. We no longer can isolate ourselves. They are failing. They are failing because something is wrong. And is it the parent, is it the, we're not going to blame. It's time to just do it. What we are doing is, and I know my time is running out, we want our service philosophy of the Parent-School Partnership, service philosophy, is service, not selfishness, to empower parents and guardians to learn about the educational system, to advocate, to inspire, to guide their children through the educational morass that we now all face. How are they ever going to make it in this lifetime if we can't even help them get through middle school, let alone high school and college? We have good people at Delta College, SVSU, Saginaw Public School District folks have answered the call. The call was a warning in golden rod, big flyer, is there a crisis in Hispanic education? And so my question that I leave you, as we launched this program grassroots, looking for guidance, looking for your support, telling you, we're willing, we're here, I'm here, I represent me, but I know that it's time. Answer the question, is there a crisis in Hispanic education? Thank you so much.
This concludes public participation. Thank you.
Thank you to all those of you who have participated during public comment. The next item on the committee, the whole agenda, is the update on accountability systems. This is a discussion regarding activities related to the design, development, implementation of the A through F letter grade system required by Public Act 601 of 2018, which was approved during the lame duck session last year. Dr. Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent of Educator, Student, and School Support, will be sharing a PowerPoint presentation. We'll engage you subsequently, board, in a discussion. Dr. Kiesler.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. As Dr. Rice said, we are here today to continue our conversation regarding Public Act 601. Here's a short outline of what we'll be talking about today. We have a quick reference, a reminder of what's in the law, two decisions that we highlighted last time, the points of decision-making discretion within the law regarding ELA in math, and then additional grades, talking about ranking labels, and then our next steps. So this is not new information to you, but we retained it here for all of our reference of what is in the law that was signed in December of 2018. The legislation, just to hit the highlights, includes five annual letter grades and three ranking labels as applicable. There is no overall summative grade. There are some requirements around identifying different types of schools, highest, lowest achieving. Alternative education campuses are not included in this system, they're excluded from letter grades and ranking. And then there is a legislatively required peer review panel that is required to review and submit a report to the Michigan Department of Education and the state legislature. We wanted to provide a conceptual layout of how PA 601 was meant to function. Back as it was in discussion for a number of years, this was kind of the layout. This idea that there, up top are the five categories of grades, and then down in the bottom are the three categories that receive ranking labels. And then this next slide just gives you an example of a school under PA 601. And this is a completely made-up example, provided for illustrative purposes. But again, so we have a mental model as we go into some of these conversations of how it could look visually and could play out. We arrive at our first decision that is to be discussed, combined or separate letter grades. So as I said, the law requires that schools receive a grade for proficiency in mathematics and English language arts, student growth in mathematics and English language arts, graduation rate, English language learner progress, and then comparison to similar schools on proficiency in mathematics and English language arts. So that's where we get five grades. However, we need to decide if we are combining letter grades, and that's the first option before you, that there would be one letter grade for each of the following. One letter grade for math and ELA proficiency, another letter grade, so our second letter grade for math and ELA growth, and then finally, a third letter grade for comparison to similar schools on proficiency in math and ELA. And that would result in three grades, plus a grade for graduation rate and English language learner progress. And this chart just shows you what we're talking about. So you combine math and ELA, and then there'd be a grade for proficiency, for growth, and for comparison to similar schools. The other option, option two, is separate letter grades. So a different grade, or a separate grade for math and for ELA in proficiency, in growth, and in comparison to similar schools. That would result in six grades, plus grades for graduation rate and English language learner progress. And this chart gives you an example of what that would look like. Talking about comparison to similar schools for a moment, this is one of the five required grades. The purpose of this grade is to ask the question, how does a school perform relative its similar peers? The idea that not all schools are the same. And so while your raw proficiency or growth or proficiency may be a certain level, if you compare it to other similar schools, it may be better, it may be worse, it may be equivalent. So this grade, and this is in the law, asks that we have a comparison to similar schools, and that requires a matching algorithm, a way to find, quote, "similar schools." Currently, when we find similar schools in the parent dashboard, because this is a function in the parent dashboard, again, developed with your collaboration and leadership, we match on four types of variables. So we look for schools with similar student-teacher ratios, similar instructional expenditures, a similar size, head count, and a similar percent of economically disadvantaged students. That makes a cluster of schools, and then that's how we compare. At the request of the state board, we are proposing the following changes to this matching algorithm for PA 601 for this purpose. One would be to match on the percentage free lunch eligible, which is a standard of greater need, as opposed to the percentage economically disadvantaged, which is probably a broader definition of need, so slightly lesser standard. And then to add the percentage of students with disabilities to the match. So that would have the function of finding schools that looked similarly on free lunch eligibility, percent of kids with free lunch eligibility, and percentage of their population that were students with disabilities. Second decision facing us is adding additional grades. So while PA 601 is clear about what has to be in there, it does not expressly prohibit the addition of grades to the system, and this is an option that the board has raised. The third part for discussion is ranking labels. In addition to the letter grades that we talked about already, there are ranking labels, and they're repeated there so you can see, significantly above average, above average, below average, et cetera, that are to be assigned for three categories under PA 601. One is the rate of chronically absent students. One is the assessment participation rate, so how many of your kids took the state assessment? And then student subgroup proficiency compared with the corresponding statewide student subgroup proficiency. So how did the students with disabilities in your school compare on proficiency to the statewide average for students with disabilities? Again, there is a discussion and a decision point here. One is combining, under assessment participation, combining into one ranking label. So for math and ELA as one ranking label, or option two is separate them, so there's one for math and one for ELA. In subgroup proficiency, the one option is to combine all the subgroups. So it'd be kind of subgroup proficiency to statewide subgroup proficiency. And the second is to separate the ranking label for up to nine subgroups. So the next slide will show how this could play out. On the left is the combination option, and chronically absent never has a split out. There is no sub, there's no components to it, it's just one always. So on the left, you see assessment participation, just as a composite, and on the right, you see assessment participation in math, and assessment participation in ELA broken out. And then you also see all the subgroups compared to the statewide averages broken out. Moving forward, what we plan to bring to you in November, and actually prior to the November meeting, the standard recommending panel, the group of educators that we've pulled together to help us recommend some cut scores to the board, is working to develop recommended cut scores, going through a standard recommending process. That legislatively required peer review panel is also meeting and will review those recommended cut scores. And so the state board will have the following information for your review and consideration, the recommended cut scores, and all the supporting documentation, as well as a report of the peer review panel on those cut scores to consider, again, for your consideration and your decision-making. Dr. Rice?
Thank you, Dr. Kiesler. If we could go, board, piece by piece, back through this, I appreciate you, your forbearance in letting Dr. Kiesler move through her presentation completely, and then we can move back through it, hitting each of the decision points, one by one. So your first decision is whether we combine or separate letter grades for math and ELA. The law is silent to this. It is arguably a point of discretion for the board. We would advocate that you put them together. But again, it's your discretion, together or separate. Any questions? Please.
Certainly. Why would you advocate for that?
Dr. Kiesler?
Together.
There's two reasons. One is it's how we do it currently on the parent dashboard, and we've been trying to find consistency wherever possible to reduce confusion for the field. That was one of our kind of guiding principles when we went into this. And the second is it's simpler. It's simpler to look, going back to this conceptual model, that is simpler than broken out by subject. That's why. That's our rationale.
Other questions?
I mean, I guess, are you looking for a decision today?
We do not have to have a decision on this today. We'd like to build towards some momentum associated with decision-making, because tick-tock goes the clock. The decisions have to be wrapped, preferably by the end of the November board meeting, absolutely by the end of the December board meeting. In the absence of that, the department has to make the decisions. And so we want to get as much input from the board up to and including the decision-making associated therewith. But one way or the other, we have to wrap this statutorily.
So, I mean, if nobody else is ready, I mean, I'll kick off a discussion. So we'd be looking at, like you said, or maybe you didn't, more than five letter grades, or be seven, or nine?
If you chose to separate proficiency, that would add one more, so it would make six, one for math, one for ELA. If you also chose to separate growth, that would make seven, one for math, one for ELA. And if you chose to separate comparison schools, to similar schools, that would make eight, one for math and one for ELA.
I mean, you know, for me, I guess, thinking out loud, which can be dangerous, but I think I'm not going to say anything controversial, that, you know, if my framework is that this stuff, you know, one test is not indicative, that this whole system is ill-informed and potentially harmful, I don't know if adding more letter grades, which are likely to be similar, so a school that's going to get a combined D or F is likely to get two Ds and two, or two Fs, and so I don't know that adding more bad grades would be all that helpful. I also don't know if distinguish, you know, making more refinement to something that we find not very telling anyway helps. So, you know, making it so that you have distinguished between math and ELA, and those numbers, we don't feel have much weight. So I guess I'm inclined to want to combine them as well. But I haven't thought through every ramification of it, or, I don't know, could a school that's going to get a D actually be, you know, have an opportunity to get a B in one of them if we broke them out? I don't know. I guess if that were the case, but then the other one would probably be an F, so I don't, again, thinking out loud and rambling now, so I'll shut up.
Think about, I think that many of the variables that drive achievement in the one drive achievement in the other, that they overarch, and that they are, in some cases, bigger than the school, in other cases, they are a function of the school. But one way or the other, they tend to drive confluence of those grades rather than a separateness of those grades. I think your inclination is, or your intuition is accurate. Other board members, questions or comments? Ms. Ramos?
Well, my feeling is that I will take the recommendation from the Michigan Department of Education and combine the two. I think Tom has made a good point, what if, you know, two Ds, two... So, and another thing is that we have been very supportive of the dashboard. And if we are supportive of that, then it makes sense what the department is recommending, because that's how we hold accountability with in the dashboard. So for those two reasons, I am supportive of combining the two.
Very good. Thank you very much. Other board members? Any other thoughts on the question of separate or combined?
I'll just say this. I don't know what anyone's learning from this. So if you combine them, then how are you supposed to know, like, how are we going to describe to people, what is the difference between an A and a B? Is it, it seems meaningless, but...
So it's probably helpful at the beginning of each of these discussions on A through F to remind our broader audience that the board is unanimously opposed to the system, and that the superintendent whom they hired is likewise opposed. Because sometimes, we just start from the premise that everybody knows where we are, and I don't think that always is true. Nonetheless, this is state law, and we have a requirement to implement. To your question, there is an arbitrariness between different grade ranges. What we've done with the parent dashboard, what the department did with the state board of education with the dashboard, was to say, we believe in transparency. Here is all the data. You make your determinations about what those data points mean. And that was the smart way of doing it. I honestly don't think that it matters an enormous amount whether you combine them or not. I think it's the data that sits underneath the letter grade that's of more importance, not the letter grade, not the label itself. So I think that is in part to your point. I'm not sure that the letter grade adds a lot of information to it. It adds some, potentially adds some measure of stigma to it, but I don't think it adds clarity. I think actually it adds obfuscation in a certain number of ways.
Are we going to define the difference between an A and a B?
We have a requirement by law to do so in each of those five categories, proficiency growth, EL growth, graduation rate, and comparison across schools. We do have that requirement by law. We have a panel that's working with us. We intend to share the results of that panel's work with the board, for the board's questioning, for the board's ultimate determination about whether they buy this or not, and ultimately for decisions associated therewith. We plan on having some small group board meetings between the October and November board meeting to share this with the board in greater detail, and then share it similarly at the November board meeting. And yes, we will have to make decisions between what's an A and a B, what's a B and a C, what's a C and a D, what's a D and an F.
No, I understand we have to make that decision. I'm asking, as a parent, if my school's a B and the school next door is a C, how do I know what that means? I know what that means?
We would share publicly the distinctions between Bs and Cs, Cs and Ds, Ds and Fs, for that matter, As and A and Bs. We would publish all of that.
Okay.
Yes. Other questions specifically on the combining of ELA and math versus keeping them separate?
It's kind of a rambling. Ramble into the mic.
Yeah, oh, ramble. Thank you. Well, you know how we have on our dashboard, it's very interactive, it's really user-friendly as far as I'm concerned. I'm wondering if there's some way to do that, so if you click on this, whatever the grade is, to get further information, if there could be more details about the school, or more, like even, you know, interface with the dashboard, that would give, tell people, like, well, this is really, this is really more information about the school that's more meaningful. So it would connect them to that information that's already there, doesn't have to be reinvented, but would combine in that way.
It's a good point. We have talked about how to properly contextualize. Dr. Kiesler, would you like to share?
One of the, there's a couple of things. I think providing some text or some explanation around these results that capture some of the thinking of the board and the department probably is going to be important. Second part, to your point, we have the dashboard that has many more types of data contextualized in ways that are really important. So like with the index, where we say, here's the index, and it does its job, but please go over here to the dashboard and use it, parents, this is where we would drive you. And then I think we, there is an open conversation around how to report and in what ways, and how to best share this information with the public.
And we would welcome the board's feedback in that. There certainly has to be something more than simply five grades and three rankings unadorned with no contextualization. So we are actively thinking through what that contextualization would be. We have a responsibility to produce the five and the three, we'll do that. But what additional information should we, in addition to a link to the parent dashboard for each school? Yeah. Other thoughts on combining or keeping separate ELA and math? Okay, here, I'm sorry, Dr. Pugh.
I don't know if mine speaks specifically to that, and you very eloquently talked about how we're opposed to A through F, and I'll just talk about how we're adamantly opposed to A through F, and it would be unlike me to not do that. But I guess my question is, what happens if, as a board, we don't take a position? I think you said that we don't have to take a position today, but if we don't take a position, then the department moves forward. And I understand, because I also want to say, because, you know, you're threatened, we're threatened. Just recently, we were threatened to have your funding, you don't have to say it, I'm going to say it, have your funding rationed out. So I understand you're under a threat, and you're trying to be responsible, and we are as well. So if you could lay out what it looks like if we don't respond to you, what would the department do?
Sure. So we've opened this conversation up to the board. Strictly speaking, the department has a responsibility to put together this letter grade system, not the state board, but the department. We've involved the board, we think it's the appropriate thing to do, I stand by that. But the clock is ticking. And we indicated, interim state superintendent Sheila Alice indicated in March that, to the legislature, that this was not doable by the September 1 legislative deadline. Our board president, President Albridge, noted the same thing. We literally got no response back from the legislature in the ensuing half-year, and it was only in the budget process that we got our response to the fact that we couldn't get this done by September 1, but that we could get it done by March of 2020. The response was implicit, but it was a response nonetheless. You need to get this completed by March 31, 2020. In a fashion, it was an acknowledgement that the initial legislative deadline was unrealistic, because their subsequent deadline within the budget process, quartering our budget, accepted that new deadline as the new deadline. That said, tick-tock goes the clock, and we've got to wrap our decision-making process before the holidays so that our technical people at MDE can do their work in the ensuing three months. So to your question, you not only don't have to make a decision on it now, you in theory don't have to make a decision on it at all, and we'll do that for you. And that, I just want to be clear, that's just direct. It's not meant with any implicit anything to it. It's just clarity that we have a responsibility to do this, you're aware of that, we'll do it. We would benefit from your involvement. You've shared that you want to be involved. But if your involvement is solely in terms of the questioning, but not in terms of the decision-making, we respect that, and we'll be guided by your questioning and the thoughts that you share, recognizing that ultimately the rubber hits the road with a more explicit system. President Albridge?
So based on, thank you for that review, that was very important to state. Based on past experience, this is step one of a longer, long-term "education reform", quote-unquote, mechanism that the state uses, particularly the state legislature, to label, defame, close, diminish public education. And so I guess if I'm making a decision on whether or not to separate or combine, my question is, which is the least likely to allow the legislature to use a simplistic letter grade to then come up with complex legislation that will punish schools based on information that they don't understand? So is it a combination, or is it three separate?
That was a lot of questions. And I'm going to, I think I'm going to demure a little bit and answer by saying that I think perhaps the least damage would be done by the combining of the two. I don't know that, but that I sense that, based on some of the things that have been shared here today, and based on some of the conversations that we've had internally. I don't know that the proliferation of letter grades necessarily benefits public education, you know, given the context that you've shared. Please.
I would say, you know, I guess, the one caveat I would make to what I had said earlier and kind of the way, the direction that I think the conversation's going, is the comparison to similar schools. I think, you know, from a theoretical standpoint, if I thought this was even a good idea, that there could be similar schools that do have distinctions, they do better in math, or there could actually be, you know, some distinctions to similar schools. And also, in looking at it from a point that I don't like this whole system, kind of those of us that oppose it feel that it may end up blowing up over this item, because you got schools that are very affluent, that are used to getting As, that all of a sudden, when you compare them to similar schools, may end up with Cs and Ds and Fs. So this may be the part that blows up, and if you separate those, do you kind of expand that potential for blowing, or that, and when I say blow up, I mean it in a good way, to get rid of it? So, I mean, I'm still probably inclined to combine them, but I guess that would be my only thought, that maybe, you know, could be a, you don't necessarily have to say, we're going to treat all three of them the same. You could say, we're going to combine the two and break out the similar schools. Makes it more complicated. I don't know if that would, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
There is a tremendous utility to comparing like schools, to determine best practices within bands of schools. So it's not to say that there is no utility whatsoever in what the legislature has passed, but I might add, that could be done without a letter grade. It could be done by simply comparing like school, like schools or like school districts on particular metrics. And so you could say, here's your comparison band of 20 schools, and we're comparing you on third grade M-step, fourth grade M-step, fifth grade M-step, ELA and math. And that can be done, and there's a tremendous value to that. And of course, it is done, has, we currently provide that opportunity with our current tool, dashboard. But you don't impose on top of that this reductive distilled letter grade. You say, here are your 20 comparison districts, or 10, or 15, or 30, whatever, and you say, here's how you do with your peer group. There's a value to that. You don't put letter grades on it, but you show the numbers. You know, you're sitting at 45%, and, you know, you have six peers above you, sitting at the following scores, and you have 12 below you, sitting at the following scores. That has a whole lot more information than the distillation, and I think is a whole lot more useful. So in other words, what you're doing, what you've done with the dashboard, is of better quality for the school improvement debate, my view, than is the simplistic letter grade system. Nonetheless, the letter grade system is what we have to work with. I, yeah.
And as far, real quickly, as far as whether we should weigh in or not, I appreciate Dr. Rice allowing us, or I hate to say the word allow, but wanting us to weigh in on it. And it's something that I haven't seen, and, well, let me just say, leave it there, that I appreciate that. And so if we are going to confirm MDE, I think it makes it easier, and I would prefer to do that, with their recommendation. If we weren't, well, I mean, we'd probably, I would hope that it would be a good reason, and I would like to go in that, I mean, I would want to not confirm it. So I prefer, if, given the opportunity to vote at some point, whether it's this month or next month, one way or the other.
Very good. Anything else? Any other board members? Ms. Vekto?
Yeah, so the, oh, I forget. The discussion around the subgroups, I just wanted some clarification and make sure I'm understanding. So the question was whether to put all of the subgroups into one subgroup? And so that would be, hmm. And I also look at, you know, and just doing the special ed subgroup, if you have some kids that have cognitive, you know, intellectual disabilities, and then others that are just like, you know, speech or something like, you know, it could be vastly different from one school to the next, and it would be affecting them. So I guess I would say in terms of, at least around disabilities, that there should be some distinction made between intellectual disabilities and non-intellectual disabilities. And I tend to not want to put all minority, or whatever, these subgroups into one. I know that sometimes Asian proficiency has tended to be higher, and so it might skew and hide where there might be concerns, so.
Maybe if you could explain mathematically how this works? Because I think, I think the notion of combination has multiple meanings.
Okay. This one is tricky. So to combine it, what we would do is take, in any given school, let's just say for the sake of argument, a school had all nine of those subgroups, which is not terribly common, but it happens. We would compare in each group, they're just, like, the ED subgroup's distance to the statewide average and get a distance measure, and then we would sum up the distance measures and weight by the number of groups that had been in there. So it's saying, it's actually, the summing is on the distance from the average over all the groups. It's not like lumping everybody into one group and then comparing them to...
So how would that be explained to a parent?
Well, again, I, this is an interesting part of the law, that this was required. It is a, I think what's good about the idea is this idea of how are you doing with your, keeping subgroups at the forefront, right? The only reason, not the only reason, the primary reason subgroups ever became part of the assessment and accountability discussion was that we knew that there were systemic gaps and inequalities, and we needed to talk about that more. So that logic of, it's not okay to just do well overall, but have subgroups drifting behind, is why this got in here. The calculation of the combination, or the calculation period of this gets very challenging to explain, because it's a distance metric, it's not just a raw, what's your performance? And then there's all those issues you raise about who's clustered in which schools and those type of issues. So how to explain to a parent, we would do our best, but I think that's flawed.
So there are schools that, as Dr. Kiesler points out, literally don't have to educate a number of these groups of young people. One imagines that when you compare likes to likes, some of those, when you compare likes to likes, there are going to be districts that have no Latino kids, they have no African-American kids, they have few economically disadvantaged kids, they have smaller percentages of special needs kids. But nonetheless, there are going to be differences across school districts. To your point about special education, you could have unlike special education populations. So you could be right on top of the state average at 13%. Your school, for example, but half of your special needs kids could be speech and language. And the other, the other half could be mildly learning disabled. My children could be a mix of moderate and severe learning disabilities, EI, AI, and, 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 a much more challenging mix of kids with which to work. I think probably we need something underneath that says comparisons across special education populations are fraught with peril, and that all special needs children, all children aren't created equal, all special education children certainly aren't created equal. In the UP last week, I heard a special educator say, what's the expression, when you've seen one child with autism? What have you seen? You've seen one child with autism. Right, exactly right. There's no way to generalize from that particular experience. And I think that's really to your point, that one way or the other, it has to be contextualized. Putting them all together ends up muting the differences a little bit across special education populations, because special education just becomes one of nine different categories, as opposed to a single category sitting out there by itself, and you're being compared nominal similarity, but a very, very substantial difference in special education populations. But there is no perfect way to do this, and I think that's really to your point. Yeah. President Albridge, yes?
Are we moving on to this, or?
Well, I guess the question is, do I hear, I mean, we could do a formal vote, we could also do it by consensus. Any concern about combining the two, ELA and math, for the purposes of this, for the purposes of letter grades? Concerns associated therewith? If I do not hear objection, I will take that as a consensus moving forward. Board comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, uh...
Would the board like a formal vote on it?
Does anyone want to vote, or you all don't want to vote? I'd like to vote.
It does not matter to me.
Okay. Could I, kind of a motion to?
I'd like a motion to, on decision one, to combine mathematics and ELA.
Very good. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Pugh?
Just for the reason I won't belabor the conversation that I mentioned, I will abstain.
Okay, fair enough. Any discussion, additional discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Very good. So seven, zero, one abstention, Dr. Pugh abstaining. Let's go to, if we could, the discussion about the addition of letter grades. Recall that Dr. Kiesler shared with you that the law requires us to have a system with five letter grades and so-called three rankings. Those are in fact not rankings, they are ratings. Sometimes when you work in the middle of the night, you get your terminology confused. And so these are in fact not... And so these are in fact not rankings at all, they have no numbers in them, they are rating labels. And that is all we are required to do, five and three. But it has been raised about, what about the addition of? Could we in fact make this better by adding a category or categories? Let me share two thoughts before we get into a conversation therewith. You, in the last couple of months, have shared some ideas on this subject. And Board Member Fecto particularly raised the issue of, could we factor in free lunch as opposed to free and reduced price lunch? You saw that as one of the factors that we incorporated in that fifth letter grade comparison across like-school districts. Similarly, the issue of percentage of special education children, not the mix, because it becomes too complicated to match on, but the percentage of special needs kids. And that also, we have incorporated as a factor in that fifth letter grade comparison of like schools. So those are two examples where we're not recommending the addition of a letter grade, on the one hand, but we are trying to help the board and the department contextualize about the complexity of this issue. So with that said, wide open for a discussion about the possible addition of letter grades. And if we could, in that discussion, if board members, if they have an interest in doing this, if we could share a specific added letter grade for consideration, so that we're talking not in the abstract or the general, but in the, in the specific. Mr. McMillan, unsurprisingly.
Yeah, I mean, I'll start this off, because I was the one that was pretty vocal in advocating this, because the legislature didn't say we couldn't, and I was hoping that we could come up with something that's, makes this process less harmful, particularly to urban schools, and recruiting teachers, and just marking them with, you know, marks that often might occur, not, I mean, just simply because I can, you know, a lot of attracts with poverty anyway. I understand, Dr. Rice, that you all have discussed this and noodled it, and couldn't come up with really anything that you could think of, because I had asked last meeting, and I appreciate this, that I'm not as close, you know, I don't do this for a living. So I'm not as close to the data, I don't know what's available. I mean, you know, I kind of, off the top of my head, said, can you, you know, can you do graduation rate growth, or something like that? But maybe that's not the right direction. But I just don't know, so I had asked, and I understand that there wasn't really anybody that came up and said, hey, how about this? I've also asked people in the field who I respect, that are, that do this, at the, within the system, and initially, they thought they could, and they haven't been able to come up with anything either. So to maybe others' surprise, I guess, at this point, I can't come up with any particular ones. I was hoping that somebody could or would, but, you know, I think, I'd like to have something that gives it more context. I think what I'll end up focusing on is more how we do these five, and, you know, we've talked a little bit about, can we do growth differently? I don't know if we can do graduation rates in, in light of poverty. Can we do, can, you know, when we do As and Bs and Cs, can we decide that all schools are going to be a B or a C? And that we, I mean, I don't know what the statute says, but can we push the limits of these things? How do we organize comparison groups of these? Is it going to be 12 strata, or 40 strata, or three? I mean, you know, I guess, those might be areas to better contextualize, or lessen the harm, in my mind, of this. But I was hoping we could come up with one or two, I, in light of not being able to. I hope maybe somebody can here, I don't know.
I appreciate you sharing that, and I have a couple of thoughts about what you've shared. But let's get other feedback on added grades from, from board members. Added grades.
So unfortunately, the things that I would want to see transparency on, I don't think you can grade. So things like governance, transparency, financial acumen, you know, that the health of the school, those things that are above the, you know, student achievement quote-unquote that you can measure through a test. So I don't know how you would be able to, to letter grade any of those things, but to me, those are also very important things, if we really want to be transparent about how, the shape of the school. So maybe that isn't a letter grade, maybe that comes in when we're looking at comparisons of schools.
The, we have six elements on which, six or five, five, five elements on which we are comparing schools. Is that right?
Be five now, based on the board's recommendations.
Right. Is that up now?
Yeah, I just pulled it back up.
Board's vote?
Board's vote.
Yeah. So those are, you know, that's the comparison on like schools, and we can, we can amend that, if you choose. Remember, in amending, in adding categories to this, one, you create substantially greater complexity, you also get into a, kind of a law of unintended consequences statistically with this. So I think some of this is, is how we compare schools, some of this is, what do we do to contextualize? You know, we talked, you may recall, about, you know, what kind of caveat do we put on this? What end note, what footnote? How do we contextualize this to say, treat this data, these data, these distilled data, these letter grades, with some measure of circumspection? Yeah, yeah.
I think we chose different words, but, no, I agree. Can I just make one more? So I think that, when I'm looking at this, something might get to what I just said, which is the instructional expenditures per student. That talks about the financial acumen and things like that. So that might be, that might get to kind of where my head is with that. But there, you know, I might need to think a little more, because there might be another way to do that as well. The other thing I would say is the percentage of students with disabilities, how is that being defined? Students with disabilities, how are we defining that? Is it simply they have an IEP?
It is, yes.
Okay. Because we do know that there are also degrees, right? So.
There are degrees, and that's to, you know, Ms. Fecto's earlier, earlier discussion around mix of special needs kids. That's, I'm not sure that there's a way to do that easily in a multi-factor analysis. It's something that I think if we had more time to work on, we could, we could break that out. But I think that we'd want to get special educators involved in a significant way, and talk about those mixes, and maybe end up weighting that factor somewhat differently, depending upon your mix of special needs kids. I could see that being a real value, because the reality is 13 percent isn't 13 percent.
Right. I think that's a real fairness issue for schools.
It is. It is, there's, there's no question about that. And just comparing on special needs children, you can have very wide skewing of the, of the comparison. You know, your special needs kids are predominantly speech and language, and mine are AI, EI, severely CI. I mean, it's a wholly different world. So I understand your point. I think that's, that, that level of parsing or complexity would require, I think, getting together a group of special educators, and really hashing that out in a significant way. With five factors, if each were equally weighted, they'd each be worth 20 percent. You know, when you start working with the mix, then, then all of a sudden, you have sort of subsections of the 20 percent. You're really talking about very fine slices of a statistical pie at that point. And I don't know that it makes an enormous amount of difference in terms of that label. Ultimately, you guys had this figured out a couple of years ago with the dashboard. The dashboard is the answer. It, it, it gives you the widest range of information, the widest range of information available to people, and let them determine what they do with that information. You know, the beauty of the dashboard is, you make no determinations, you board, you know, we department, about what is of value to individual parents. Individual parents go in, and they look at the dashboard, and there, you know, dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of data points, and they say, this is of value to me, and that, that looks good, from my vantage point. And, and then you have another parent who looks at the exact same data and says, absolutely not, there's no way I want my child to be in a school with that, with that data. This actually is far more distilled, and provides less information and less transparency than does the data, than does the parent dashboard. It's a paradox.
Right. And I completely, I'll get off my soapbox in a minute, but I completely agree with you on that. But I've been on this board for 13 years now, and I can tell you, when I first came on, the conversation was about cut scores, and what, what means proficiency. And at the time, it was sold as, look, it's all about the growth, and it doesn't really matter what the cut scores are, and it doesn't really matter what the label is, because really, we're just looking at where they're, they're going from here to here. And that all sounded great, until five years down the road, when it turned into, well, now we're going to use this to punish people, and now we're going to use it to close schools, and now we're going to use it for this, and we're going to use it for that. So I am at the position now, where even though we know that this means nothing, and that today, we have a much better system that we can use, which is the parent dashboard, the reality is, five years from now, someone's going to take a look at this, and they're going to figure out what they can do with this information to satisfy an agenda. And that is where my concern is, so that's why I want to make sure we're getting it at least as close to fair as we can now, because down the road, I guarantee you, this is going to be used for very, in ways that, that nobody said it was intended to be used today.
Thank you. Ms. Fecto.
So one thought I had is, instead of counting the frequency of kids with special education, count the FTE, which is what they're actually, the school is dedicating their resources and money to. And that, I think, would have a stronger impact, and it also may reflect that if they're counting the FTE, that they have more severely disabled children, instead of just the number, the overall frequency. So that was a thought that I had, and I want to turn on the bandwagon. So I'm going to take my turn. And, so, yeah, so it's not just that they want to change the, close the schools, the legislation that came from the federal government and was supported by the state, and was to convert, was pushed to convert them into charter schools. So it wasn't just, just to close schools, it was that somehow, public, traditional publics were failing, and then there was, you know, one of the options was to close the school, fire the teachers, whatever, and destroy the union and open up more charter schools. So that, to me, was an agenda that was, you know, that's right in line with what our Secretary of Education thinks is beneficial to, I don't think it's to the kids, but that's just my two cents. So, so I think it's important to also look at why we have so many, and I've said this before, why we have so many charter schools in hard-to, you know, quote-unquote, underserved communities? I mean, there is money to be made with the tax incentives, with, you know, with the hiding, with the for-profit model that we have, with the lack of transparency, because they're not subject to the Freedom of Information Act, and they're appointed boards that are not elected, that really have no, no power. So it's, it's a system, and this A through F, which was really lobbied strong by those who work hand and glove with Betsy DeVos, they were pushing this, and I think that's the agenda. That's the agenda. The agenda is not a civil rights issue. It's, the agenda is to make money with these hedge fund managers that invest in these charter school portfolios, and brag they can double your money in seven years. That's all part of this. So I'll get off my bandwagon now. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Who, who else would like to share? We're on the, we're on the issue, for those of you who have just tuned in, we're on the issue of adding letter grades to, to the A through F system. Are there, are there any thoughts on the addition of letter grades?
Well, I guess, where was the other slide? And I think this is going back to Cassandra's point. Where was the slide that gave some of the different, it was like the economic, so, and this goes, and what's on my?
This is just to keep people on the same page in the hymnal. This is the fifth letter grade that we're talking about, right here.
Okay, okay, okay. So I guess, in thinking that through, it's, I think it still goes here, and plus, Michelle got to do her rant, but.
Thank you very much.
I guess, my, my thought, I can't get my mind off of Benton Harbor, and just recently story that came out, and data that came out, that looked at Benton Harbor as the eighth most segregated by economics in the country, and the second in the state, only to Detroit, when you look at comparison to a neighboring district. And when you look at, some of these districts are receiving the same amount of per pupil funding. And then they're still supposed to be able to compete in this same system, at a time when we're not looking at differentiated funding, and we're not looking to give, I shouldn't say we, the legislature is not looking at to provide additional funding for these districts. I mean, how does that fit into this discussion? How do we grade a school district that is that far behind, but at the same time, receiving the same amount of funding? How do, how do we, how do we credit a community for that?
Okay. Let me ask you a question. Do you consider that to be a rhetorical question, or one that you would like an answer to? Because I'd be happy to answer it, but sit back.
Okay.
Okay? Because you, I mean, in all, in all seriousness, we have kids coming into school with less than their peers in neighboring districts, and then getting the same or less than in school. And we expect them to perform at or above their peers. You can't get less at home, less at school, and expect to do the same or better. It's not going to happen. The, the value of weighted grades, which the governor supported, which five studies in five years have supported, the value of weighted grades is, you make up for the differential exposure at home, as you well know. And it's an outrage that we fund predominantly heads in the state, rather than funding needs in the state. And it is responsible for more of the, bless you, for more of the variation in performance than we care to share in the state of Michigan. If we were to, to fund needs, we would begin to make up for the different exposure that children come into school with, in the absence of funding needs, in the funding of heads solely. We simply reinforce the different exposure that children walk into school with. It's a profoundly inequitable system in the state of Michigan, it is among the most inequitable in the country, and it is, in good measure, responsible for the results that we get. It's not to say that we can't do better under the current circumstances, we most assuredly can, but we can do a lot better if we were to fund more equitably. And the, the children in Benton Harbor and St. Joe are in very different communities, with very different exposure, and very different resources, and then you, you roll into school. And they don't get substantially more in Benton Harbor to make up for the, the disconnect, the, the challenge that they face rolling into school. It's an outrage. How to factor that into this system is a question. The best way to factor it in is through this fifth letter grade, the slide for which is up behind me, I think, is up behind me, if it's still there.
But I think this audience. And if there's any media out there, needs to continue to hear that, why we struggle with this system.
We, we struggle with it because it purports We struggle with it because it purports to measure strength of instruction and, and strength of learning when in fact it simply measures inequity from birth straight through public education. Yes, Mr. McMillan.
I'd like to just, I think, potentially wrap this up since again, this decision too was kind of, I was really precipitating the idea of adding a letter grade. I guess I'd rather not vote not to add a letter grade because I, and because I think we can just vote not, I mean, not, not add one at this time, but I would say that when we just, when we discuss next month, how we're going to measure growth and what Vanessa and Dr. Kiesler and I have talked about and Dr. Rice, is a different way of measuring growth. If I lose that argument or that, you know, proposal to change the way we're going to do the growth letter grade, I could conceivably see that we might, I might try to push adding a letter, adding a sixth to include what I think would be a more fair way of, of grading or of doing growth. So at that point I might.
Fair enough, but what I heard for the time being.
I'd like to move on.
Fair enough. Is the rest of the board comfortable with moving on from the discussion of adding letter grades? Very good. Thank you. Ranking labels. Wanted to remember, these are, these are not ranks, they are ratings, but they're called ranks nonetheless. Five different labels possible for each of three different categories. Chronic absenteeism, number one, assessment participation rate, number two, student subgroup proficiency compared with statewide student subgroup proficiency. And the three, and the five labels are significantly above average, above average, average, below average, and significantly below average. Questions on this for the board. This has been given less attention than the five letter grades. One could argue it's, it's less objectionable than the five letter grades, but it nonetheless is part of the system and we have a responsibility to bring this to a conclusion March of 2020 as we do the rest. President Albridge.
So two quick questions about assessment participation. The first one being, is it a common practice that someone might take the math and not the ELA?
It is not common. It happens. We overall as a state have pretty high participation rates in assessment. It's something we've been focusing on for two decades. The schools are pretty good at it and we've got good reporting, but every now and then a kid doesn't take one and takes the other for a variety of reasons.
And currently, don't you have to take 95%?
Yes.
So, so are we going to be in a situation then where, let's say, 99% of our schools are labeled average because they're all 95% and above and that actually kind of makes them look not very good?
So this is what's going to be a really interesting conversation around setting standards against these numbers, right? So how much is enough? How do you assign a label to percent assessed when we know the bulk of schools are at 95 or above? That's some of the information we're bringing to you next month for discussion. That's a decision point. That's a cut score that needs to be set.
Okay. My question was about the cut score though. My question was about the label.
Right. So the law says there need to be five potentially applied, but to your point, is average 95% or is average, is getting an average amount of this thing? What does average mean in the context of this? That's a cut score. But the intent of the legislation is that all label be applied to every school in this areas and it has to be one of those five labels.
It is perhaps the most challenging of the labels because so many are clustered together. And because you don't have a significant distribution, it begs the question, how you cut up that distribution? It actually hearkens back to an earlier question about the skewing of grades, the skewing of a grade distribution rather than having a normal curve for a grade distribution, what about 70% or 80% all of one, one thing or another. One could imagine that thinking being most applicable for this particular ranking. Yeah. And that was, I wanted, I want to be clear, for the purposes of this conversation, that was not advocacy, that was just a comment on statistics. Yeah. Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. For the chronically absent, I know in one of the legislations that has been passed, there's been a number thrown out there. Is that the number that we think we're going to use as the base or the average or?
So I'm not familiar with what number you are referring to.
And I may be getting my legislation mixed up with, I thought there was something out there that said something like 85%.
So our, our business rule that we use in the parent dashboard now and the index, and that is the kind of nationally recommended standard, is 10% of days. So any student who's absent 10% of days or more. There was legislation floating to make it Michigan's law. I'm just not aware, I'm looking quickly to see, I don't, I didn't think that passed, but Scott says he doesn't think so either. So, but that's the, the standard, 10% of days.
So it would be about 18 days?
Yep. Again, depending on your calendar and how many days you were enrolled and whatever.
Okay. The assessment participation, I'm just going to go on record right now, I don't have a problem with giving all of our schools significantly above average because I don't know what the average is with the other 50, 49, excuse me, I can't do that much, man, 49 states. They may have low participation. So I, like I said, I'm just going on record saying I don't have an issue with that. As far as the subgroup goes, what you're talking about then is putting all subgroups together and then doing the same statewide, coming up with the average.
So actually it would be, let me try to explain this one more time and I actually almost need to draw it out myself. So for each one, let's say the average for all of those statewide is 50%, let's just say. So for each one, for each school, and a school has all nine subgroups, you would say, our economically disadvantaged proficiency is 50% and the state average is 50. So the distance measure is zero there. They're right at the state average. But then in students with disabilities, let's say the average is 30% and that school's at 10. Their distance measure is negative 20. So kind of summing up the distance measures down all the subgroups. And so you want a small number, like golf, like you want to be as close to zero as possible or you want to be above average, I guess, but you don't want to be below in a bad way.
Okay.
I know it's complicated. I mean, it's our, it's the most complicated calculation part of this. So maybe that lends to your decision or maybe it does not.
Actually, the fifth of five letter grades, the three of, the third of three rankings are the most complicated. Isn't that right?
Yes. I think it's a real race between those two.
Okay. All right. Very good. President Albridge.
So I, this is the one that I'm, I think I'm the most concerned about because I think the longer the algorithm, the harder it is to replicate. And I'm not even worried about whether parents can understand it, I'm worried about whether the school can understand it. So if they get a C, they have no idea what they have to do to move up because it could be any one of nine different things and then tied into an algorithm that comes up with a state average of one of nine different things. And I think by the time you're done, it's, it's impossible to even understand, number one, how you came up with the letter grade, but second, what you do about it. And so as much as I don't want to have inundation of useless information, I also don't want to have something that is so complicated that nobody can ever figure out what it means. And so this is the one that I'm, I think I struggle with the most because it will, it's going to be completely, no one's going to understand what this is, what it means or how to replicate it or, you know, the validity, the reliability, anything related to this. And so this is the one that I think I'm most concerned about.
You should be concerned about this one for, for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is categories affect one another. They don't, they don't stand separate and distinct from one another. You know, to be, to be poor in, in a predominantly poor school is different than to be poor in a predominantly middle-class school. And to compare poor populations in unlike institutions, very, very different. So to say, well, how are the 5% poor kids doing in a middle to upper-middle-class school district and how would they compare to the 95% poor kids in a predominantly working-class and poor school? Those are, those are apples, oranges comparisons and, and that distinction is not made well with this metric. This is, this is a problematic metric, but probably the only good thing about this metric is that it's a label and not a letter grade. But again, you know, with the dashboard, you present all this information, people can see all the information, they can draw their own determinations about it. Putting labels on top of it, I don't think adds to it. I think it just confuses.
Can I just be clear again though? In the law, the comparison was supposed to be of a like school was supposed to be created by a commission. In lieu of that, I think what we did is we looked at what we do with the dashboard, correct? So we don't actually have to use all of these different criteria.
There, there are two different parts of the law.
This is not related to the comparison.
Yeah.
Oh, that, that's the letter grade on the eighth, says number five. Okay, never mind. Thanks. However, it does raise the question, do we have to use, what, what do we have to use and what are we choosing to use?
So what the law says, I'm going to go back to here, is that there have to be ranking labels, one of these five ranking labels assigned to these three categories. And one of those categories is student subgroup proficiency compared to the corresponding statewide student subgroup proficiency. That's what the law says. So we have flexibility in exactly how we do it, we don't have flexibility in doing it. And I'm not saying this to particularly advocate for a combination, just to play out a little bit more how it would work. The idea would be you have a high negative distance score from the average, let's say. And what that would suggest to you is that you have a problem with your subgroup performance. And then we would say, you should be looking at the parent dashboard. And the, the other reporting we do, because we have lots of subgroup reporting and even more at the school and district level, so we would actually try not to over explain it here. We'd use it as kind of a proxy flag and then drive them to the more detailed reporting that they have. That would be our logic. Again, I'm not saying if it's good or bad, I just wanted to kind of play out how it would work. Or if we listed them out this way, you would see a school, let's say, would be, the example I was using, a school right near the average would probably be about average, a school well below, again, we have to set cuts, but would be something below. So you just see a bunch of labels. So in theory, a school might be average, below average, significantly below average, 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 above average, below average, above. And then I think they would still need to go into the other data and understand more about their, their subgroups. So just to play out the two options, how they would work.
So Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. One other question. What's your number going to be used for subgroup? I know it's rare, but there are schools in Michigan that don't have enough students to be counted with a subgroup.
Our current business rules for subgroup is 30 students. We talked extensively around ESSA, so you've just found another potential thing to talk about again, about lowering the subgroup size. I think we talked about it at the board table and we did not, so our current practice is 30 for subgroup. And you are right that there are schools who do not have, I mean, everybody would have, there's almost no school that doesn't have at least, well, some school, very small schools come off the map entirely for qualification. Most schools have at least one subgroup, but you're right, it's a.
It's a wholly different world. Diverse, diverse schools in, in this metric are treated differently than homogeneous schools in a whole host of different ways, including this metric.
If we combine them, the plan would be to wait by the number of subgroups. So if you only had one subgroup and it was far from the average, you would have a bad distance metric.
Correct.
So that would be, I guess, more positive for, more equity among school types, but yeah.
The, the other thing is, is one student can affect more than one of those categories.
No question. Well, and that, and that was to my point about poverty. There are, there are factors that affect multiple categories. So poverty is going to affect many different categories in here.
Which has always been a subgroup issue.
No doubt. And, and so if you have the, the responsibility and the honor to educate more poor children, you are adversely affected in this metric. And this is not a comparability across like schools metric. I want to be clear about that. This is not the fifth of five letter grades. This is the third of three ranking labels. It's a wholly different world here. Okay? There is, there is no, there is no competition among likes with this. This is, everybody competes. This is, this is basically the old Indiana high school basketball tournament where, where everybody plays everybody, whether you're, whether you have 10, 10 students or 1,000 in your high school. Anything more on ranking labels? Yes?
Do we, so do we have a choice of saying whether to combine them or not, these subgroups? Is that?
It is, it is strictly speaking, a choice. And strictly speaking, we could create a whole slew of additional labels, like we had the decision to create a whole slew of additional letter grades. It, in some ways is helpful and in other ways simply shrouds the challenge of the metric to, to begin with. Because if you have 30 poor kids in a middle-class school of 300 children, so 30 of 300, or 270 of 300, 90% are middle-class kids, 30% are poor kids, it's a wholly different world than 270 of 300 being poor children. And to compare the one school to the other is not to be comparing apples, apples. And, and you know, if you've not taught in different schools, if you don't understand, I, I respect that, that's fine. But, but those of us who have know that there's a difference. There's a difference in climate, there's a difference in culture, there's a difference in prior knowledge, there's a difference in exposure, there's a difference in parental support, a wholly different world. And I'm not saying it's bad, I'm not saying it's good, I'm just simply saying it's different and comparing across districts is fraught with peril. And that's why organizations that are as, as, and that's, that's why many different organizations have chosen to attempt to contextualize student population in order to facilitate comparisons across schools. I'm reminded of the fact that the Mackinac Center has done that. Yes?
Well, I'm thinking, you know, there's Asian population out in Canton, right? There's a big Asian Indian population out in Canton and they would be somehow compared to Detroit as having the same, you know, similar subgroup where they're, you know, so you would take somebody who is from, and I work at Wade State, I have a number of, you know, it's same thing with Troy, but so they would have, they would consider them minority, but a lot of them are children of professors that are here from overseas.
It's a wholly different world.
Yeah. So, but they would be considered somehow compared regardless of income as being similar? Am I understanding?
Rephrase your question for me, please.
So if we're going to combine all of these things into, and consider them a subgroup, so you would take, you know, you would be comparing a community that has, say, you know, 70% minority or African-American would be considered similar to Troy or some other community where they might have a very high number of Indian students or, you know what I mean, who are considered Asian and you would somehow say that that's a, they're comparable? If they're.
So you would compare your student subgroup proficiency in your school with the state's average for, average proficiency for that particular subgroup?
So, so you would compare it to African-Americans, African-Americans, not African-American, not just all subgroups?
That's, that's as I understand it. So it's the, it's your, your, for example, your Latino proficiency rate versus the statewide, your African-American versus proficiency rate versus the state's African-American proficiency, your white proficiency rate versus the state's white proficiency rate. Your special needs proficiency rate versus the state's. And, and you essentially sum those, divide by the total number and essentially get a dispersion metric from the. metric from the measure of central tendency, from the mean, if you will. Okay? And it's a sloppy statistic. There's an enormous amount going on in it. It's, look, it's not a statistic that any statistician would put together for a whole lot of different reasons. It's just a sloppy number. And it is what it is. The good news is, it's simply a label. It's not a, it's not a letter grade. But it is arguably the messiest of the eight. And it has competition. Yeah?
Thank you.
Please.
I just want to say, I hope anyone out there who's still dispelling the myth that this is simplifying things for parents is forced to sit through this conversation.
Okay. Well, that sounded like a motion to move on in the agenda. If I don't hear any objection, I'm going to take it as such. Anything more for Dr. Kiesler? Okay. No board that we will do small group presentations and discussions with you between October and November? That November, we will be back and we will be sharing with you As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs on the five letter grades, categories, and then cuts among the different, among the three ranking labels. And we will have a conversation about growth. Yes, sir. Thank you. So that will be, those will be the subject of the two-hour-plus meetings. They will also be the subject of the November board meeting. We hope to land this, if not in November, then in December. One way or the other, it has to be landed by the holidays, either by the board or by the department. Okay? Terrific. Thank you very much, Dr. Kiesler. All right, board, time to catch up. Time to catch up. If we could, if we could begin that catch up with the...
Motion to approve, minutes submitted.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Report to the president.
Yeah, in the interest of time, I'll turn this on. We'll forego my report, other than to say that Deputy Superintendent Sheila Ellis has been visiting schools, and she was visiting a number of them in the Southern Thumb area, one of which was my alma mater, Yale Public Schools, and brought back a bulldog. So just thank you to Yale and to Sheila for this very thoughtful gift. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. I also had the opportunity to do school visits in the Eastern UP last week. This was my first opportunity as state superintendent to be in the UP. I learned an awful lot. I was in a school of 38 children in a Whitefish Township. It is also called Paradise, Michigan. Who knew that you could be state superintendent and in paradise at the same time? Go figure. I was at the Ojibwe Charter School, 115-student charter school in the Eastern UP. I was in Brimley Area Public Schools, 540-student, a K-12 school, all in the same building. I might add, Ojibwe Charter was similarly K-12. Whitefish Township, at 38 students, was K-12 as well. And these are very geographically isolated populations, so the idea of consolidation makes sense in Lansing. But when you get up into the UP and you realize how far you travel to get to the next group of kids, it has less meaning when you actually see the children. I was tremendously impressed with the resiliency, the creativity of educators and students in the UP. Had the opportunity to visit Le Chenault Community Schools, Rudyard Area Public Schools, Sue St. Marie Public Schools, also the Eastern UP ISD Special Education Center, which is in the Rudyard Public Schools, or Rudyard Area Public Schools, and then the Eastern UP ISD Early Childhood Education Center. It was an extraordinary whirlwind tour conducted by Dr. Dan Ria Torre, the Superintendent of Eastern UP ISD. And it was, it was something. These are people that are getting it done with very, very little money. And their populations are challenging in ways that we have less understanding of where we live, and that's not a disrespect to anybody in the room, it's just not our experience. But I was really impressed with their work. These are people that require the funding that was lost during the budget process. And I would encourage our leaders to get back to the table and finish up their budget work. Because the loss of funding in some of our rural districts is real, it's profound. 22D funding is important. It's funding for geographically isolated districts. They're not solely in the UP, but they are in part in the UP. And this is a small amount of money in aggregate. It is a big amount of money for individual school districts. So again, I would urge our leaders to get back to the table and finish up their budget work. I think there's more to be, to be done moving forward. And that concludes my state superintendent report. If we could move on to our report of our Michigan Teacher of the Year, Ms. Cara Laheed.
Is this on? We have some slides that I think I sent. I'm pretty sure. We've only got like 75 slides, so it shouldn't take any time at all.
I think it's on Ada.
Yes, it is. Yes, absolutely. There we are. I'm Cara. This is Jessica Matthews, and she is our Region 5 Teacher of the Year, and she's going to be speaking to you for a little bit today, too. So this has been a really crazy month, and I thought I would just kind of fill you in on some of the things that I've been doing and what I will be doing. And then Jess is going to tell you a little bit about her experience. So I have spent a lot of time visiting elementary schools in my own district, because embarrassingly, I didn't even know where some of them were. We have 13 elementary schools. And so I've been trying to get into every school. And just, I'm not there as a big, like, take pictures, PR type of a thing. I'm really just going in to help in the classrooms or the media center. And that's been really fun. Side note, I did not realize the difference between a kindergartner and a first grader in the first week of school, because I've taught high school for 22 years. And it was very eye-opening and fun. I was also a guest reader at one of our middle schools in a special education classroom. She has someone come in and do First Chapter Friday to get kids interested in reading. And then I'm going to be visiting a new class at Adams called True Stories and talk about my favorite nonfiction books. So that's just some things going on in my district. All of us, well, almost all of us, the Regional Teachers of the Year are going to be going to Central this Friday. And then I'm also driving to Western on the same day. So that's a lot. Next week, I will be going to our Oakland Schools Technical Campus in Pontiac. I've never been there, I'm very excited. I'm also going to visit Armada Schools. They are doing some incredible things in McComb, plus it's close to my house. And then also, the new academies at Romeo. I am going to do a tour as soon as they're ready. I'm letting them kind of get settled in, because that's a brand-new facility and program. This last weekend, I spoke to the Delta Kappa Gamma Society International of Women Educators. I was a keynote speaker for them. I didn't even know they existed, and now I think I'm probably going to join. So it was very, it was very fun and interesting, and they laughed at all my jokes, so that was a plus. And then this Friday is the Central Michigan Teacher Candidate Conference that we'll all be going to. These are just some of the other things I've been up to. I'm not very good at taking pictures, because I don't like taking pictures of kids and putting them out on social media. I will try to do more taking pictures of the things they're working on or programs in general, but I need to work on that, because I just am, I feel a little weird about taking pictures of other people's children and putting them up for everyone to see. So, but I have been working with Oakland University, just like I always have, working with MEA. I went to visit with the Utica teachers, they're new teachers. And then with my own student teachers at Stony Creek, I've still been able to work with them, and then the group at Adams across the district. And then I've gone to my first two Special Education Advisory Committee meetings, and that's been really eye-opening, and I'm learning quite a bit about special education that I did not know before. And then I've also been continuing to develop some relationships with my PTA, which is great. You can do a lot when you're not in a classroom for seven hours a day. It's been incredibly rewarding so far and very busy. So here's Jess.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jessica Matthews. I want to just give a little basic information about me. I received my bachelor's degree in English with a specialization in secondary education from the University of Michigan, Flint. After that, I got a master's degree in the Art of Teaching from Mary Grove College in 2005. And recently, my work has been with Michigan State University. I did the Red Cedar Writing Project, which is connected to the National Writing Project, so I could become a consultant for teachers in the US, Mexico, Canada, a couple of other different locations where I can go and teach other teachers. So I got that certification in 2015. Teacher experience and celebrations, those are, that's my second hour in the middle picture. They gave me permission to show it off. We just finished homecoming, so forgive me if I sound tired, because homecoming is always an adventure. I'm a proud educator from my alma mater, which is Carmaningsworth High School. I've been part of the Carmaningsworth community since first grade, when my parents decided to move me from Flint Public Schools to Carman, so it's been a long time of being part of CA. Other celebrations, I was a 2018 Michigan Council of Teachers of English Secondary English Teacher of the Year, and I also have received some different awards from the NEA. I was 2017 Social Justice Activist of the Year and NCTE, National Council Teacher of English. I received Teacher of Excellence Award last year. I'm a soccer coach. I've been coaching for 20 years. I officially got to, as they call it, retire from high school coaching last season. I stepped down. 20 years at one school is a long time. I've actually coached longer than teaching, just by a little bit. But I, of course, did not stop, because coaches don't do that. And I'm now the head coach of the women's club team at the University of Michigan, Flint. I have the label of a racial, environmental justice, and institutional racism activist. I am a person who lives in the city of Flint, and in the last couple of years, I've been involved in talking not only about environmental injustices that have happened in the city, but also thinking about the institutional things in which that will affect the kids, and of course, the dynamics of race and money within my city. I'm a writer. I have two books. I'm a blogger for Teaching Tolerance, and I am currently doing work with Choose Champions, which is a racial literacy program with teachers from around the country. So I'm helping develop lesson plans to help teachers to have more conversations about race and how to integrate it and evaluate the different biases they have within the classroom and share more stories from other kids. My passions are giving back to my community. As I stated, I'm a resident of Flint. I'd like to state, it's been 1,993 days of us struggling, dealing from the Flint Water Crisis. I feel like I need to be a role model for kids in speaking up and not feeling defeated by the crisis, and also demanding change to make us whole again. I love to instill love and empathy to all of my kids at CA. I'm a lot of their mom. They use that term a lot. And I like to give love, not only compassionately with my kids, but also with reading, writing, and learning to develop a voice. I think developing your voice is one of the most important things we should be doing for our kids, no matter K through 12. Without a voice, they don't exist, and we shouldn't allow our kids to feel like they don't exist. My belief in the classroom with activism work, this is our objective every day when we do work in my English 12 class, which is called Activism and Inquiry. We focus on to create a movement of activism within classrooms and our communities that will revolutionize our society and lead towards all people feeling a sense of love, liberty, and value. So we do all our work, all our reading, all our writing, all of our conversations are all talking about how can we make the world a better place. I believe kids are the ones who are going to save us, and so I pour everything I can into being an example for them, but also giving them opportunities to speak up, speak out, and make the world a better place.
That concludes me.
Questions? There's no questions.
Questions for our Teachers of the Year? Going once, twice, thrice?
Just wanted to say...
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Is there anything that you have for us?
Oh.
That we could do better?
I will say this really briefly. Because I don't want people to be like, oh, she sat back down. The one thing that I would strongly urge for everyone here is, with being from the community of Flint and having so many of my kids that are, my school district is a mixture of many kids. They have kids that are from Flint Township, we have kids that are from the city, we have kids that are in the township that get the city water, and we have kids who live on the rural outskirts. So we're like a hodgepodge of all things. But the one thing that I do worry quite a bit about that I would like everyone to consider is, all the conversations we've been having today in this space that are very important with letter grading and different issues, the group of kids that are from Flint are going to be heavily affected by the decisions that we make or the things we don't speak up about. They are going to be cognitively impaired, physically impaired, emotionally impaired. We need to demand a plan. And that is the thing that I am constantly talking about. There is no real plan of what we're going to do for these kids to deal with testing, to deal with evaluations, to deal with so many different issues. And if we just take the attitude, as many have been doing, of saying, the water's clean, but the people aren't clean, there's a lot of things that we have that are loaded on us right now. So to just ignore and be like, the Flint Water Crisis is over, it is not. The crisis is bigger than just the water at this point. It's infrastructure, it's educational plan, it's so many different things. So I would just strongly urge that when you make these kinds of decisions, think of kids like the kids that are in Flint, and think about what can we do to make them whole and what is fair to them. There's so many things that have happened that are so unfair to them, and we need to step up and we need to take care of them, because they need to be productive people in our society and not be people who are bitter, not be people who feel defeated, not be people that feel ignored. So if we can do something within this space to make a change in that area, it will just work wonders for the kids that I have.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you asked that question. Next item on today's agenda is approval of Camp Tas Mahita. It's the spending plan for 2019, 2020. The Michigan School for the Blind Trust Fund Committee met on August 27, 2019. Members Ms. Shell Fecto and Ms. Nikki Snyder reviewed the Camp Tas Mahita spending plan for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Board is being asked to approve the spending plan at today's meeting. Ms. Fecto and Ms. Snyder, do you have anything you would like to say about this item?
Well, I, you know, there's been some changes over the last year, but there's just this dedication, and a lot of positive things that you will be hearing about. I went and visited and spent a day there. I encourage anyone who has the opportunity to do that. It's just a, it's a beautiful place, a real special place, so. And I think they're overall, it's very positive, and they're doing a great job.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Snyder?
I just know that you guys said Jeremy was a big loss, and so you're working forward in that respect. That kind of stood out to me. Very supportive of what you've done and the changes that you're making.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have, we have three presenters here today. Dr. Scott Kennischneck, Ms. Roxanne Balfour, our Director of Low-Incentance Outreach, and Ms. Jill Teagarden, our Camp T Site Director. Ms. Teagarden is a new MDE employee. Welcome. In the audience, we have another new employee, I believe, Ms. Michelle Wolf. Ms. Wolf, there we go. That's the Queen's wave. The Financial Manager of the Low-Incentance Outreach Program. Welcome to the MDE team. Gentle people.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rice. I'm going to turn it right over to Roxanne Balfour to walk through very briefly the spend plan, and then certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you. As Michelle said, this has been a transitional year for us. And yes, Nikki, it was a big loss for us, for Jeremy, who was our camp director. So of those of you who were at the table last year, we announced his actual departure from Camp T to go to work for the school system. So it's been a year where we couldn't really be as productive as we normally are for our camp. camp. We actually closed it down for a length of time, just because of the safety of the students was our priority, and we wanted to make sure that we put everything in place that we wanted with the new camp director before we opened those doors back up. So we really used it more for a facility of rentals for other groups that came in, the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts came in a couple of times. That being said, however, it took us a while, but we got Jill Teagarden here hired in June. She was a teacher. I'm going to let her speak about herself a little bit here, and we had to wait for her to actually finish out her contract, because she is a dedicated teacher, which made us even more excited that she was coming to finish up with her kids. And then I also want to point out, Michelle joined us in June as well, too, and so she will be taking over the operations and the facilities and working very closely with Jill on this. That being said, we did get a few things that were kind of exciting. Before I turn this over to Jill to introduce herself, we had an occupational therapist working on her doctoral residency with us, January through May. So she came in and actually did some programming and planning, and we had, she was from Huntington University, so her faculty person came out and reviewed some of the programming that we did, so that was exciting. We actually used it as our first one when Jill came on board, and she did the program, and we amended it a little bit, but it was very exciting that we got that started in July. I really want to make sure that I answer any questions, too, with the budget. We did get a truck leased for camp, so that is huge. We have three people at camp. We have Jill. We have Dan Geis, who is our maintenance person under contract full-time, and we have a part-time office assistant, Patty Enzing, that we just hired this year as well. So that makes up our camp. So a big focus this year is going to be hiring some persons to support Jill in the work she does. But we did get a truck, so Dan doesn't have to use his vehicle anymore, so we're very excited about that. No personal use of, yeah, his vehicle, so they're happy. We are looking at this coming year of building an activity in nature center. So we're doing a cost analysis, if we're going to use the current facility that we have, or if we are going to have to start from scratch. This will probably be a three-year project, and we also have some additional funds beyond what we have for our trust fund to do that. Our landscaping and entryway has been postponed. We had talked about that last year, but we had had two people agree to do it and then back out to do it, so that's been a long undertaking as well. It is needed, so we're going to work on that this year. Also, what we're hoping to do in the maintenance area is get some interns, some of our transition skills students this year, so we're going to start that in April, and actually have some of those come and help Jill and Dan as well. We did hold a meeting with some of our other blind, visually impaired camps this year, so we had four people. Was that three at the table besides us? Three or four? Yeah, so we had a good conversation trying to schedule not over each other, but with each other, which is really important, because we have such a small population that we serve, that if we all try to go over each other with our camp, we're just not getting them coming through the same door. We're getting one or two here or there, five or six. So that was a very good meeting. We also met with National Federation for the Blind, who holds science camps as well, usually at U of M. They are going to be working with us, bringing camp back to Camp Tasmajita. And for those of you who don't know the title, touch, smell, hear, taste is what Camp Tasmajita -- you'll see that site is the one, one of the senses that is missing, so just as an FYI. But I would like Jill to talk about it, since she's new. She has taken this over. She is fantastic. I mean, for her to just come in and run with it, and we have Amanda English, who's a consultant in our office, she has been our BVI, Blind Visually Impaired Liaison, and she has been wonderful in helping get some things up. But I'd like her to also talk about what we have coming up in October very quickly. A little bit about myself. My name's Jill Teagarden, and I was actually a classroom teacher for 15 years before transitioning over to Camp T's Site Director, and I was grateful that Roxanne allowed me to actually finish my school year out last year. So I was hired on in April, but officially hired as a contractor, I guess, in April, and then was able to transition in as a full-time employee in June. So I had that teaching experience. I was a middle school teacher, science teacher in particular, and before that, I worked for, actually graduated with a recreation degree. So when I came upon this position, it was like all my worlds into one. So I'm super excited to be aboard, and there are lots of programs we have coming up. In October, we have, actually, we're in the month of October. It's already here and it's sneaking up on us, but we're getting prepared and ready to go with our Family Nature Club, which was kind of put on hold, but we're back in the swing of things with October. With that, we have well over 30 people signed up with families coming out. We have a big group coming from the Detroit area, and really, we have a variety of families from all over the state coming to join us. So the theme of that is the Pumpkin Palooza, so we have lots of fun activities where we'll have families, we have them cooking, baking, carving pumpkins, lots of activities with that. A couple others that we have coming up, we have in March Forest Frenzy, so that's another theme we have coming. And then in April, we have another one around the corner. It's about earth, with Earth Day being a big theme with the earth. And then we have some camps coming up in the summer, too, with some backpacking, that we'll do some camping right on-site with tents, because we have lodges that they're used to staying in, but we're going to do some tenting on-site. And that's some different age levels that we have with that. That will be the older group doing that. And then we have another, I can't remember the theme. It's kind of like a, I can't remember the theme of it, but it's, the idea is behind, like, good old-fashioned camp games, activities that we'll be doing at camp. That's for the younger group that we have coming out. I'm hoping to be able to make some connections. Actually, I've made some connections with some students that have already been out and kind of had transitioned out of that K-12 spectrum, so some alumni that will come out, hopefully to have a day camp, maybe overnight camp for them, because I know that they, there's a need for that, just with speaking some of the groups that want to come out and enjoy the Family Nature Club. So a lot of great things happening at camp, so I would welcome any of you to come out. I know some of you have been out there at any time to experience camp with us. We'd love to have you out. Thank you. So does anyone have any questions regarding the budget or our activities?
Do we have a motion to move the 1920 spending plan? So a second? So we have a motion from our president, I believe, support from Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion? Going once, twice? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The ayes have it, and we have a standing invitation to Camp T.
Yes, in fact, we would like to get the board all over there to have a meeting one day. 300 acres, take off the coats, get in the canoe. Michelle knows. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it.
It would be really hard to televise from Camp T. Thank you very much. Next item on today's agenda is the approval of nominations to the Special Education Advisory Committee. Each year, the state board is asked to approve nominations to the Special Education Advisory Committee on May 14. The board approved nominations. Since that time, organizations have recommended 11 additional member changes, which are being presented to the board today. Board is being asked to approve the nominations to the Special Education Advisory Council at today's meeting. And here, because he richly enjoys our state board meetings, to present to us is Dr. Scott Kennick-Schnect.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Rice. All of you have a document in front of you dated September 24 of 2019, which contains the information about the 11 candidates to be named to serve on CAC, whether in a regular appointment or as an alternate. And so these, all 11 of these are representatives of associations from across the state of Michigan. There are 24 associations represented. Again, all 11 are being nominated by a respective association. There are no members-at-large that are being asked for your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
A motion by Board Member Ramos Montini. Do I have a second? Support by Ms. Fecto. All in favor? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Dr. K. Next item on today's agenda is approval of standards for the preparation and practice of school social workers. The standards for the preparation and practice of school social workers were written to support the top 10 and 10 strategic goal three, to develop, support, and sustain a high-quality, prepared, and collaborative educational workforce, as well as the Michigan Department of Education's whole child priority. The standards were presented to the board on June 11, 2019. Public comment was solicited through September 15, 2019, and the board is being asked to approve today the standards at our meeting. Here to present to you today, because she, too, enjoys our state board meetings, back again by popular demand, is Dr. Kiesler, along with Dr. Sean Kotke, our Education Consultant Manager, and Mr. Sung-Ti Shu, Education Consultant. Gentle people.
Thank you, Dr. Rice and board. It's our pleasure to bring the final standards for your consideration and approval after a period of public comment. I'm going to turn it over to Sung-Ti, who will present to you the overview of public comment.
Thank you. Hey, before I present the results of the public comment, I just want to take a couple minutes to remind you of the item and the process of development and the reason why. So in June, we presented the proposed standards, because the current competencies are a list of tasks school social workers do in the schools. So we wanted to elevate it and to, to a general set of knowledge and skills that school social workers must know and be able to do in order to provide services to students within the school, within the schools. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. And so just also as a reminder, there are currently two sets of social workers that, who are working in the schools. One is social workers who are licensed through LARA. They are, they completed their school, I mean, their social worker trainings and take the exams through LARA. And then the additional set of, we call them, school social workers, who not only possess the credentials issued by LARA, but also are approved by the state, by the Department of Education, because they have done additional training as school social workers. And the set of standards that we are asking you to approve is for this, for the training of this specific set of school social workers. Okay? So the development of the standards began in August of 20, last year, and there are internal and external stakeholders involved in the, in the development. And so since August of 2018, we met twice a month, twice every, almost every other week. So we met every other week through March of last year, and then we finalized and presented to the board in June, and then sent out for public comment in July, on July 11 to September 15. Okay? And so the total of submissions, or total of indicating their support for the standards are 70, so 70 comments we received, well, 70 indications we have received. And out of that, there are 18 provided specific comments on their thoughts about the specific standards and/or elements. We also asked them if they would share with us where they're from, so there are 22 counties represented and 45 school, school district or ISD represented in this submissions. And then for the 70 that indicated their support, they are all, they all indicated a range of support. So 38 of them completely support, 17 of them support with minor revisions, and 12 neutral, and three indicated some significant revisions need to be, provide, need to happen. Although, out of the 11 individuals provided comments and suggestions as to how to revise the standards, right? And then out of the three that says a significant revision needed, only one provided actionable suggestions. And so you will be able to see that in the documents that are provided to you for the comments and responses from the stakeholder groups. So all the comments, we can kind of categorize them into three different categories: minor language qualifications, revision of elements, and restructuring of portions of standard two. And I will discuss every single one of them, I mean, most of them, with you in the following slides. Okay? So after the revision, there were, there were 30 elements, but now there are 30 elements in standard. Oh, there were 28 standards, I mean, 28 elements, but now there are 30 elements out of the seven standards. So for standard one, there's really, there's no changes. Everyone is happy about that we refer to the national standards of ethics. And standard two about assessments, as you can see, we did some rearranging of the standards, put the individual family system and organizations, kind of moved them up, so that the language is clarified a little bit more. And then we also made some changes for the element two, again, is to clear the language about the resiliency of the students. So standard three, we added one element, because people were wondering about how, I mean, where mental health is provided or could be provided through school social workers. So the stakeholder group added applied proven tools and methodologies to provide mental health services. Standard four, we divided element, based on the feedback, we divided element two into, element one into two elements. So to emphasize and distinguish the responsibility school social workers have to students and to their own practices. Standard four, we also made some changes in element three to clarify that the programs and services would need to be in accordance to IEPs and IFSPs. And then standard five, we changed the language just to clarify, using the word, the phrase with multicultural awareness, because that's more easily found in literatures and other And then standard six, they were a question about the definition of current, so we took that out, and we made it learn and apply continuously, so that, to, so to emphasize the continuous improvement and continuous development. And element one, we added with local context. Standard seven, we changed the word essential to legal, so that their responsibility are reflected in the, in the legal requirements. So that's the updated standards for your approval, and once it is approved, we will begin to, begin working with preparation programs to revise their programs, and then, so that they can start taking in candidates and prepare them. And we anticipate that candidates will start coming out from these new programs in spring 2021. Any questions?
Mr. McMillan?
So what happens if we don't, if these weren't approved?
So there are, there are current standards, competencies. The current competencies would remain in place. So basically, the system doesn't get updated, aligned, it doesn't reflect these.
I read somewhere where there's the intent to make a certification?
It would be nice if this worked.
I thought I read where, yeah, certification and program, the stakeholder group strongly recommend development of a school social worker certificate?
Because currently, the credential is a letter of approval. So school social workers, they get a letter. They are not in our certification systems, so we wanted to update, update and integrate them into our certification system.
What would be the difference between the two?
So the approval, once they get full approval, there's no renewal, so it's lifetime, and so that's inconsistent with other credentials that we have. In terms of difference, I think it would just be easier for MDE to track where they are and how they are doing.
Because they'd have to continually get recertified?
Right.
So they could end up losing their job if they don't do something? So, they could end up losing their job if they don't do something?
Teacher do it, yeah.
So, wait, yeah, sorry. Let me just clarify. They, so, I was, we figured out the problem. It was off. So, we turned it on. This is really excellent. This slide helps, I think. So, they are licensed social workers through LARA. And there are, whatever the licensing requirements around being a social worker are, they have to keep those up, as would any social worker. And then, much like teachers or much like anybody working with children in a school setting, if we added a certificate, it, they would have to renew that over time to be a specific school social worker. And there would be requirements for what it takes to maintain your certification. So, it wouldn't be any different than a teacher, a principal, a special ed administrator, that sort of thing. But if we didn't do a certification, like Sung T. said, it's harder to track and know where people are and remind them to keep things up to date. And also, you know, we can't make sure that we're helping support best practice in the field. But the licensing of them being a social worker in general would be, that is a separate function. So, I just want to be clear on that.
Okay.
It also would help us, you know, right now, there's, to Sung T.'s point, they kind of have to carry this letter around. There's burden on districts and schools to say, "Show me your letter. Where's your letter?" If it's a certification in the system, it's easier for everyone to make sure that this person has the required approvals to do the social work with students with disabilities in a special ed setting.
But we're not voting on certification. That's just an intent. Down the road, we would maybe. And then, standard five, I, it seems rather loaded, social and economic justice. Element two is communicates educational jargon in understandable terms. What, what kind of jargon? And is that really a word that you find in standards? Jargon?
Sure. So, we don't define what the jargon is. However, if you, like, because they're working with special education populations mostly, and there are a lot of jargons, there are a lot of, like, what's that called?
Acronyms.
Acronyms, right, that, that families may not understand. And it is, we wanted to ask the social work, school social workers to be able to communicate that, communicate that clearly with the students and families they are working with.
Okay. I mean, and then, economic justice, what, what's the definition of that?
The intent of that stand, of that standard on social and economic justice is that our school social workers are advocates for our students, no matter what their backgrounds are, that children do not fail to have access to proper social services as a result of income or socioeconomic bracket. And so, that's where we're coming from when we're talking about economic justice in this, is advocacy for our students from deprived backgrounds.
What would economic injustice be?
Do you want to add to that? Sure. Depriving of one's, not having access to services as a result of one's income.
It's not that some people have more income than others.
It's not about redistribution of income, if that's, that's what you're asking.
I mean, that's what it often.
Well, that's, it, it's.
I mean, it's just, does it belong in standards?
Right. It's, you know what? It's an important, it's an important question, but the clarification was asked and, and the, the answer was given that this is not what that, what, what this is about in this particular case. So, that's an important conversation, but a conversation that is separate and distinct from our conversation on social workers here, here today. If I could suggest a friendly amendment, rather than the term educational jargon, if we could change that to educational language, I think it might be more appropriate for, for the setting here. Does anybody have any issues with that friendly amendment?
Terminology.
Terminology. I would be fine with terminology, except that three words later, it says in understandable terms.
Okay.
So, it becomes a little bit redundant. But otherwise, I think I would have said terminology. People comfortable with language?
Good.
Good. Any other discussion thereon? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't think a motion was made.
I beg your pardon. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I intend to pass.
Fair enough. Any, any additional discussion? Got a little bit ahead of myself. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Those who would like to vote, votes would like to abstain?
Pass, abstain.
Okay, very good. So, we're 7-0-1 on the vote. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on today's agenda is state and federal legislative update. I'll turn this over to Board Member Lupe Ramos Montini, chairperson of the board's legislative committee.
Thank you. Let's get the report in our little hands. Okay. Everybody has a report?
It's coming.
Okay, it's coming, it's coming. Well, the committee, the legislative committee met on September 24th, and Dr. Judy Pritchett was on the call, and Lupe Ramos Montini, and then, representing the Michigan Department of Education, were Marty, Caroline, Stephen, and Marilyn. So, I thank them again for the assistance that they gave us at this meeting. And just so I don't forget, the next meeting will be on October 29th at 1:00 p.m. So, we have different items that we are going to go over with you. And where is Marty? And Marty will introduce a, a statement concerning the legislative actions during lame duck session that was recommended by President Cassandra Albridge. And also, if you look at the last page in your document, if you would like to recommend items to the legislative committee, please use this form so we know exactly what you want us to consider, and we can look for that information with the bills that are being introduced by the legislature. That will help us a lot. Okay. With that, Marty, will you go over?
Sure. Thank you. At the legislative committee meeting, we did discuss two things. One was the budget, the state budget, which was passed. It did not go to the governor when we met on the 24th. It has since gone to the governor. The governor made around $128.6 million in vetoes in the school aid budget. And we learned today that the, so the question was, was the legislature going to pass supplementals to reinstate some of those vetoes or do veto overrides? And we learned today that the state senate has introduced 23 separate supplemental bills, each with individual veto items on them. We don't have the full list of what has been included in that, but we do know that there are separate bills to reappropriate several vetoes that the governor made in the school aid budget, including, as Dr. Rice mentioned about his visit to the Eastern UP and the importance of the small, isolated districts funding. There was a bill introduced, a supplemental bill to introduce, to, to reappropriate that money. That in the budget was $7 million. I don't know if the supplemental bills puts the exact amount back in, but that's what it was that was vetoed. Also, the charter school foundation allowance would be put back in. Again, these have got to go through the legislative process, but the bills have been introduced to do that. That's $35 million. $10 million for secure schools. $15 million for summer school literacy intervention grants. $350,000 for autism interventions. So, those are the ones we know. There may be others, but those are the ones that have been reported so far. Again, there are 23 separate supplemental bills introduced. We understand that there is a, a meeting with the governor and the quadrant, the quadrant, or the Democratic and Republican leaders in both the House and Senate. That meeting is Thursday, where I think this will all be discussed to see if an agreement can be made. And so, those supplemental bills, if an agreement is reached, then those supplemental bills will move through and then get passed and those, those items will be, will be adopted. Of course, in the negotiations, there may be other things on the veto list that will be included too. So, this is the beginning of the negotiations to, to reappropriate some things that have been vetoed. And again, the 23 bills include vetoes across all the budgets. It's not just the school vetoes, but all the budgets that were, that were signed and then with some line item vetoes by the governor. So, that's an update on the budget, on the state budget. The legislative committee also discussed, per President Albridge's recommendation or request at the last meeting, a statement on two joint resolutions, one in the senate, one in the house, to require a change, this would go to the voters. If these joint resolutions are adopted, it will go to the voters, to change the Michigan constitution to require a two-thirds vote on any legislation taken up after lame duck. And lame duck is the, is the period after a general election every two years. So, you have the statement before you on page eight. So, I'll throw it back to Dr. Rice or Lupe.
Okay. Have everybody read the statement? Have you taken time to read the statement? Any questions on the statement? You want to go over it? What, what would you like to do? Because if everybody is in agreement, we can ask for, for a motion.
Moved by the president.
Support.
Seconded by Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, we have a discussion?
Yeah. You know, I would just say that I certainly, what happened with ADAF being passed lame duck, I am supportive of the spirit. I don't know if two-thirds is the right. I think a super majority, something over 50.1% would be reasonable. I just am not sure if two-thirds is too high.
Is that, is that a, is that a prelude to a friendly amendment?
No, I don't think, I, no. And, and secondly, I don't know that anybody would care what we think, but I don't know. I mean, I, but I appreciate the spirit, so. I, it's a prelude to another pass.
Okay. But, but, but it's also, but it's also a marker for you agree with the general direction.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand. And I can, you know, a lot of bad stuff happens in lame duck, that's for sure.
Right. Okay, fair enough. Any, any other, any other discussion? Preguntas? Commentarias? No? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Thank you very much.
And pass.
And I'm sorry, and one abstention. Thank you very much. Anything more on the report of the legislative committee?
Okay. We, we have just one more item. We have been trying to get an additional legislative reception. And so, we were trying to get one on the books in November, but there's no space in, in the MDE building. There's no space. And, and there's not a lot of interest either on the other side. So, we're going to try December, right, Marilyn?
January.
Jan, oh, even December didn't work. We go, there's no space. So, and then, they're not in session either. So, we're going to go to January and try to have something there. Marilyn has been so kind as to reserve a room, so we have the room, we have the space. And so, we will go ahead and formulate an invitation and invite the legislator, legislators to meet with us in January.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Please.
Is there a date on the, on the circuit court? I think I asked you. Does anybody know if there's a date on the circuit court decision with regard to Detroit literacy issue? Does anyone know?
I, I think, I think that's oral arguments. Yeah.
So, okay.
Dr. Pew.
I have a question. My question is going back to the budget, and I might have missed this, but there are a lot of questions around the autism budget. And so, I know I asked some of those questions. If there's any clarification, because I heard upward of $350,000, I couldn't find that. I know I asked that question.
$350,000 in the school aid budget.
Right.
I believe there's autism money also in other budgets that may have been vetoed. But this, like I said, there's a supplemental bill that's been introduced today in the senate that would restore that $350,000 in this for autism interventions.
And then, what about?
That's school aid, not MDE.
Okay, okay.
School aid.
I mean, school aid, that's what I meant.
Yep.
But what about the other, but did they give the $300 million? Did anything, with the other budget?
I think there were other, there are other supplementals that included autism-related line items.
No. This was a, this was a $350,000 appropriation for a pilot program.
Right.
And that was for MDE.
Pilot program to train 60 early-on providers in evidence-based parent-implemented models of intervention for the treatment of autism.
Was that one of the 26 non-government agencies that would have received that funding? Or was it?
I, I do not know that. I do not, I do not want to overstate my, my knowledge, which is thin as it is on this subject.
Correct.
Right. And, and just to note, the, the budget process was clearly a challenging one. And we did not end up with the budget that Michigan children deserve. And I think, you know, I think we as a board could, could probably agree on that. We might differ on different aspects of the budget, but it was brought to a conclusion in a very abrupt way. And, and it didn't serve our children, let alone our, our, our adults. So, I'm, I'm glad there's conversation about getting back to the table. I thought that was inevitable. It needs to happen sooner rather than later. The categories that Mr. Ackley has mentioned are important categories. There are other important categories as well that have to be addressed also. Please, yes.
The $30,000 that was extra to go to special education, that was never vetoed, is my understanding?
If it was.
There was 30 million, 30 million that was supposed to be extra for special education.
If it wasn't vetoed, then it's, then it's law.
Yeah, that's, that was my understanding, is it wasn't vetoed, so it's still. And the Autism Alliance is the one who is getting a million. It's not from the education budget.
Okay.
And I don't, I have a feeling that's probably on the table as well.
Other?
I just want to make one final announcement. I want to introduce a committee. Dr. Judy Pritchett is the co-chair, and then, we have Nikki Snyder and Tiffany Tilly.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Other, other thoughts on legislative committee? Once, say. Beg, beg your pardon, and, and now, we're on to NASB. Okay? Well, member Tilly?
I want to follow up on last month's discussion. So, I will be attending along with Nikki and Lupe. It has been confirmed that Lupe will vote for me and that Nikki will be the alternate. As Lupe is stepping down from being the central area director, and thank you for your service, I put my name in the hat. And so, I just want to read the statement that I released to NASB of why I want to run. "Education has been a lifelong passion of mine. As an early childhood reader, I know how important ECE is for our youth and how life-changing being an early reader is. Having taught and worked with youth in some of our most impoverished areas in Michigan, I am a champion for equity in our schools. I want to be a champion for our youth locally and nationally. As a board member for NASB, I am committed to being a change agent and voice for our youth. As educators, it is our role to help develop great minds and give them the platform they need to soar. They deserve every opportunity and every resource they can attain to become great thinkers and doers. I want to be at the table to help that process." So, I am looking forward to running next week and letting you guys know the outcome next month. Thank you.
Very good. Good luck.
Okay. There's more to the report.
Okay.
Okay. So, NASB has made some changes in the bylaws that is required for us as a board, as members of the NASB organization to vote on. But again, these document with all the changes has been sent to us. And so, I just want to say that as, as a board member, we went through these. member, we went through these changes, I don't know how many times, like three, four times. And so, and these are, changes are to make it more efficient, to streamline the organization, to put a price tag on some of the things. Now, for instance, right now we have two area, central area directors. In this bylaws that we're going to vote on at the convention next week, God, I didn't know it was next week. Next week, we will be not having the two people. What NASB is doing is, when the other, my co-central director finishes term in a year, then we will only have one versus two, so that it will eliminate the expenses of two. We'll just concentrate on one. That's, you know, one of the more significant ones. And another thing that I wanted to say is, when we vote for the central area director, what will happen is that the three of us as a state will congregate together. And so then whatever we decide, and I think we're gonna decide for Tiffany, then I take that vote to the whole. And then every state will declare who they voted for. And, and so that's how that process will work. Yes?
I forgot last month, we had a vote, and we also put a people.
Yes.
Why did you guys not?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, but we, that's what they require. Each state will get together, and we vote, and do the voting the NASB way, and then we submit to NASB. Everything is very transparent. Everything is, is done all together. All the states will be together in one room. And, and, but they, they want us to vote by ourselves, and then we turn that to the whole, in, in the NASB structure. And, and then it depends on who all the other states want, and that's how the tally will happen at the end. We'll vote for Tiffany, but then we'll, we'll wait for all the others to vote. So I would like to make a motion to accept the changes in the bylaws for the NASB organization. And so I'd like to make a motion.
Do I have a second? We have a motion by Board Member Ramos Montini, support by President Albridge. Any, any discussion?
Is it, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Is it mainly eliminating one of the?
Well, and there's words, like they used to use the National Association for State Board, but they want to use NASB now.
Okay, but nothing, nothing more substantive than removing one of the?
No, well, you know, if you look through the, just typical thing that, I know you looked through all these pages, Tom. So anyway, it's nothing drastic, no.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Are there any board members who wish to offer comments? President Albridge? Vice President Pew? Dr. Pew?
You know, one thing that I will say is that I'm happy to be home, here. About eight, eight minutes away, yeah, because of the meeting, trying to get in on some extra work this morning. And, you know, just really being able to see the community come and contribute towards in a very unique way. And so I really enjoyed that, and enjoyed the singing. But the young lady who talked about Hartley Nature Center, taking me back to my childhood of four, three years, I remember that vividly. That was a great experience for me. The other thing that I want to talk, mention is thank you for your words about the city of Flint. The city of Flint, last Friday, Friday before last, we named our first poet laureate.
Oh, that's cool.
And so we're excited about being able to work with literature and literacy from the city perspective, as well as joining and making that link between health and literacy. So I think that's it.
Terrific, thank you. Any, anyone else in the audience you'd like to recognize?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I would like to recognize the gentleman over here. This is my father.
That's terrific. Welcome. Thank you. Future, I'm sorry, other, other board member comments? Ms. Vecto? Ms. Snyder? Ms. Tilly?
I would like to thank the Saginaw ISD for hosting us today. And the kids were amazing. Everything, like she said, the singing, the drone, and, and, the grownups too, of course, the food. And, and just really loved how engaged the students were with what they were doing, how excited they were, especially with the students that were singing. It was wonderful. And I would also like to suggest that we do a board retreat at Camp T. I think that would be awesome.
That would be cool.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a great idea. Ms. Laheed?
I just want to thank Jessica Matthews for being here with us today. I love spending time with all the regional teachers of the air, and I get to see her twice this week. So that'll be great. So thanks for coming, Jessica.
Thank you very much. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. Thanks to the Saginaw ISD, as I think everyone around the table. The children stole the show, but the information and the adults' information was very helpful also. And I appreciate the, while I don't appreciate the A to F, and everybody knows that, and everybody around this table concurs, I do appreciate the substantive conversation we had about it today. I think that's important. I appreciate Dr. Rice walking us through the process, and Dr. Kiesler for her patience in understanding our frustration and trying to help us determine what's the best way to deal with something that we do not believe will benefit school districts at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ramos Montini?
Well, I am delighted to be here. I want to thank the Superintendent Stewart and all your team. It was fantastic. You treated us with a lot of respect and dignity, and I truly respect that, and, and loved every minute of it. The students, the teachers, the support, everybody. It was great. It was great being here. Even though I had to travel, but the travel was so great. All, I did many different things. And then last night, we had a meeting agreed with some of the Hispanic community members, and that was a delight. We, we went to a restaurant here. And I want the, the members that were with me last night to please stand and be recognized. There's still, there are two are still here. And Suzanne Hewitt.
Yeah.
Suzanne came with me, and she did the driving. And so that's a big treat for me, because I didn't have to drive.
The next time, when you're in Saginaw, let us know. The rest of you will be invited, so.
So that, that was a very special treat last night. And then the meeting today was absolutely awesome. I, I learned a lot from the different people that presented, but there was one, I don't recall who it was, but they talked about the morale. When the morale of the teachers is down, the morale of the student is down, and so the, the educational piece does not occur. And I, you know, I'm always worried about how a teacher's feeling, because in my mind, they are the heartbeat of any school district. If the teachers are happy, then the superintendent will be happy and everybody else. So that's very, very important to me. Now, also, what was very key about our meeting greet last night is the three issues that we talked about were the third grade reading law, bullying, and the shortage of teachers, because those affect the brown and black students profoundly. And so it was very interesting that today we talked about all three of them. So they are on the top of everybody's minds and everybody's agendas. So it was, it was good to hear. So I thank the Superintendent.
Thank you.
Marilyn, you did an awesome job, and all the team back of me. I know that it's a lot of work bringing a meeting to outside, and I always applaud Marilyn, even when she's there in Lansing, but I know, I know it's a lot of work. So I appreciate the department and the superintendent, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. McMillan?
I would say that during public comment, it was good to hear, a lot of good that charters are doing. We hear that regularly during public comment, and it's good to hear the good work that a lot of them are doing. And then I just will say one last time, because I guess potentially, we're going to be voting on certain things next month regarding A to F. You know, as a former lawmaker, the, the reason, there's a reason they didn't put specifics in there, like how to determine what an A and a B, or does it have to be standard deviations, or how to organize the comparison groups, how to define growth. If they would have, they probably wouldn't have gotten the votes, because it would have impacted one way or the other. So they left it general, and, and that means that we have the ability to do things that we think would be less harmful, I think. Or, in their eyes, better implement, but in our eyes, it would be to make it less harmful. They gave us that ability, so I think we should utilize it. I hope that in the ensuing weeks, leading up to either November, or I heard we might even have until December, that we utilize this, you know, the latitude that they've given, whether it is the definition of growth, whether it is how to determine an A and a B, or can most of them fit in a B and a C, how to organize the comparison groups. I mean, I really, you know, it's, the easy thing would be just to do what everybody does, and kind of go with the flow. But I really think that when we're talking, this is such a time as, as this is why this body is elected, is when legislature does bad things, that we're an advocate for public education, and to try to either, you know, blunt that to some degree, or, you know, when they invade our space, so to speak, we, and they give us area and room to, to change or to modify, I think we should take advantage of it. So I hope that in the ensuing weeks, leading up to either November, December, that we don't just kind of coast, that we really, really dig in and think about it.
Good. Thank you very much. Future meetings are November 12th, 2019, December 10th, 2019, January 14th, 2020, all 9:30, all in Lansing, not at Camp Taz Mahida, although possibly a board superintendent advance in the, in the coming months there. Who knows? One never knows. Do one. I do like to talk in terms of advances rather than retreats, because I do think we ought to move forward rather than, than backward. With, with appreciation to Dr. Stewart for her hospitality, and that of her, and that of her people, with appreciation for Marilyn Schneider, who, who got us here and managed to get us through this board meeting, not an easy gig on the road. Any future topics for future board meetings? If so, please let us know. Dr. Pew?
I just have a question. One of the, I just thought about the speakers, is how do we follow up with people who go there? And then we have a question about, we'll go back and go with Jackson, Bill 509, but there was a question around the school for the deaf.
Right, so different, if, if there are discrete issues, we often follow up with, with people. If they are, if they are broader, we tend not to follow up with people. But if people allege particular things, if people suggest the, the need for department follow-up, we often will follow up individually with people. It's, it's kind of on a sifting-through basis. Yes. Yes?
I do want to propose a meeting agenda, but have someone from CAC speak about what they feel are concerns that we should be aware of.
Okay.
The advisory committee.
Yep.
To come forward.
Okay. Dr. Kay, you got that? Okay, terrific, good. Before we adjourn, we thank our hosts. It is October 8th still for a good portion of the day. It's a lovely day. We've spent most of the time indoors. Enjoy the outdoors. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.